We continue to get, or if we get any emails within the time of our meeting, there is, I would note, a disclaimer within our agenda that you can read on your own in regards to your emails following under public records. We're going to go next into petitions, applications, presentations. We have a couple tonight. First is the Rutland Girl Scouts, and we have Megan Ryan with us. Welcome, Megan.
Hi, thank you. Um, we're, we're hoping is that you guys can give us a space where we can install a shed for storing things like our camping supplies, items for dances. We're running out of space in our homes. It's what, you know, leaders typically do. I currently have several things of camping supplies, a Christmas tree, various flags, things like that, and I just don't have space for it. And there are also others who have the same issues as well. So we're just hoping there could be a space somewhere where we could get, an area where we could put in an eight by 10 shed.
This is Leah. Uh, I have a question, Meg. Are you asking for outdoor space only, not for a shed itself? The Girl Scouts will take care of the shed and everything. You're just looking for the actual land space?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a nice small square somewhere. I put, I did include a couple of maps in my letter with some ideas of where we could put it. Honestly, we're open to just about anywhere as long as we can access it. Yeah, you're allowed ideally.
Uh, really?
We were thinking either out by the community center at the end of the parking lot, like near where the Lions Club shed is, or even behind Naquad on that access road going down to the fields. I think there's a shed already there. I'm not sure what it's for, actually.
I guess, uh, this I could just type in. Go ahead, Mike. Uh, just wanted to let everyone know we are now live on TV.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome all who are joining us live. Uh, you, uh, everybody who's with us on Zoom, you have an option to raise your hand. We can try that. Hopefully, we won't need it, but we can give it a shot if we want. Can I ask Joe Buckley? I think he has seen us. Joe, do you have a preference as far as where it goes?
No, not really. Um, I don't know. The, the school department or what, who's in May way in on the school side. They, you know, that, they really do control the facility there. But, uh, no, I don't, I don't necessarily have a preference.
So just, um, you know, for the new members, the sheds that are over the community center right now, there's one for soccer. Then there's one for the Lions Club. Lions Club is the more recent, the newest addition. They pretty much went through the same process. They came to the board, asked for permission with the understanding that the town would hold no liability for the shed nor would it do any prep work. And the shed was basically just a private holding that was being allowed to be placed on public property. There's, there's also sports sheds. Uh, there's one at Central Tree. There's one at Naquad. There's one at Memorial Field. Those are all held privately as well.
So, this is Mitch. Hi, everybody. Quick question, a couple of questions about this. So we don't have any liability, obviously, for the personal belongings. What is the extent of our liability as it pertains to our space? You know, are we going to have access to the shed? Like, what does that look like if something were to happen to someone when they're accessing something that's in the shed on the public space? Do we have any legal liability there from a town's perspective? Like?
We should be fine there. Uh, we have other groups that store things, uh, the Forests and the Cubs go storing things at the community center. Basically, if they, uh, they would own the shed just on our land. So anything associated with the shed would fall to the outside group liability. So good question.
Okay.
I have one more question. Do you, do you have a timeline when you'd want to get this done?
Um, not currently. I mean, we're about to start fundraising for funds to purchase it. Upon the issues with everything that happened, um, one of the places we were about to fundraise was at our dance, which is probably going to be canceled at this point in time. So we're not in U-T rush. So just want to kind of get the wheels turning, move it.
Okay. This is Mitch again. And Mike, do we, do we then draft like a lease or how does that work from the town's perspective to get the ball moving?
Yeah, it's a very small one, probably like a paragraph at the most. Yeah, we can do that.
Would the board like to give conditional permission tonight or wait for anything for Joe?
I think maybe we should just, um, wait to see where we could put it and then, you know, what, I guess the, what you're looking to do, Meg, in terms of like the shed size, like what funds are needed? Just a little bit more information. I don't think, it, it seems like it's something that we do pretty commonly. And, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know what we would accomplish by, I guess, improving it now other than just saying you have the go-ahead, but it just sounds like we need a little bit more, maybe.
I mean, I think the go-ahead, I don't want to speak for you, Megan, but it would basically be the fact that they could begin remote fundraising, having heard that they have permission to place it. However, to your point, if we're looking for footage, things like that that they need, and we want to give her permission, we want to give Pine Hill permission for a very specific location, we can return to this later.
I mean, this is Leah, sorry. I wonder if it's possible that we give permission to, that we are willing to allocate space to be determined based on their needs? And that way, that gives them confidence that they can go ahead and start fundraising while we kind of look at what the school may say about having it on, um, Naquad proper, you know, the, at Naquad, or if we want to go to the community center and look at Eric and, um, you know, have Joe look at it or whatever. I don't know if we give the kind of permission to go ahead and won't back to where.
I guess my only thought on that, Leah, is that, uh, we don't know, like, for example, with the community center property, what we're going to be doing with that property like six months or however long that we're looking at what we're doing with it. And I just, you know, I think we should know where it's going first, just so we can have some contingency as to if it has to be moved or where the best place to put it would be for like, I guess, the long-term kind of deal. But, well, I don't think anyone, based on our conversation, the fact that we do it is opposed to it, uh, but could be wrong.
I think that's kind of what I was looking for, is not necessarily, you know, having a specific spot. I just want to know that we will be able to place it somewhere instead of us going to, you know, raising the money and then coming back and just being told, never mind, you can't, you know, you can't have one at all. So we're just hoping for the go-ahead.
One thing too, and I know I stopped sharing the screen here, but in the letter that we received too, it does say an eight by 10 shed for people to look at.
That's what I was thinking, is around eight by 10, yeah. I wasn't really planning on getting much bigger than that. All right. Bigger at all.
Well, this is Jeff. Do we, do we need a vote to give her the go-ahead or maybe just try, just start polling?
We'd need a real vote, I think, based on the fact that it sounds like we want to have a couple of questions answered. What we could do is give her a, a conditional approval based on the answering of a few questions. So for example, having the school get back to us, maybe checking with Nancy or the Council on Aging, having Joe take a look at the site over at Glenwood Road to make sure it wouldn't interfere with any parking issues. To Mitch's point, I think we've got that, we've got that concern with any of the sheds that we allow. If there were a construction project or anything coming down the Pike, it would be incumbent on the owners to have to make arrangements to move their sheds.
Uh, this is Wade. If I could jump in with one more comment. Is this something that's going to be built on site or something that'll be delivered? Or it could be moved later on if it, if need be?
Well, we hadn't gotten that far. I was originally planning on something to be delivered, um, but we did have another leader who was a father, who was a builder, and she was kind of fun to talk to him as well. But my original intention, I'd actually called Lowe's to see what it would cost for them to build her shed, honestly.
What's the, uh, does anyone know what the size limit is for when that triggers point of comment for the shed or building permit? Not sure. So I just.
Yeah, I don't know. I think I'm ahead of it.
I think, I just want us, I think, just for me, I just want to see more, like, to know where it's going, what we're going to do with the property. Like, I would just like to see a little bit more information. I know you don't need our permission to fundraise, but I just, right now, we would just be voting to essentially vote, um, without seeing anything. I, like, I would hate it for us to put something somewhere and not talk to any of our department heads about, you know, what the use is and where it's going to go and anything like that.
Okay. So our list is that Pine Hill could get a, maybe a stronger sense of what type of construction it is, right, Wade? And then as far as the location, it sounds like people are pretty open here, so we want to try to get an answer from Central Office from the district to see if they have objections to Naquad. And then Mitch, what were you looking for for the Glenwood site?
Uh, I just, I just want, I think it's a little more information, like what, you know, how it's going to be put in, what is going to be building it, and whether we have to pull a permit. And for the other sites that are being proposed, maybe if they involve any of our department heads, maybe at least writing it by them first without voting on it. Before we do that, it's kind of a, you know, professional courtesy.
Okay. So Mike, that sounds like, um, starts with Nancy. I would say it could be a listed arena since recreation schedules that field. And just a heads up to Lions Club and Soccer, that there might be another shed joining that area.
One quick question. Where do this, the Girl Scouts usually meet?
Uh, well, we all have different troops meeting in different areas. For example, my troop meets at CTMS. Some meet in the library. We have a troop that meets in the wood studio. Trying to think of who else they might be meeting. I think that's all our meeting spaces come.
Thank you.
All right. So it sounds like we're going to continue this to next meeting? Not enough time for everybody? Mike?
Yeah, that could be tight.
All right. So Megan, thank you.
Thank you.
Last, we'll get hopefully as much information as you have at that point. If you could kind of nail down which one you want, we'll check with our building department to make sure it doesn't engender some permitting. Go over there.
I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Michael Rotondo, who has an Eagle Scout project approval request. Welcome, Mikey Rotondo.
Um, hello. Good evening. Rutland Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator. Thank you for having me at your meeting tonight. My name is Michael Rotondo, and I'm a Life Scout for Trip 141 here in Rutland Pass. And I'm here today to get your approval for my proposed Eagle Scout project. So every year.
Uh, you're pulling that up. Sorry about that, Michael.
Oh, that's all right. Thank you. So every year, Rutland has a Memorial Day Parade and that, which my troop attends. And before that parade moves on, my troop goes around different cemeteries and memorials that honor veterans here in Rutland. And one that we attend is the one at Memorial Field, uh, which is next to the playground in the center of town. And that memorial is to honor World War II veterans. And every year that we go there, I notice that the memorial is not in the best condition and is in great need of repair. So I've always thought that that's a good Eagle Scout project and that it would help out the town and everybody, everybody around. So I think that would be a very good Eagle Scout project. And some things that I, I think need to be repaired is the flagpole, because first of all, it's very rusted. And I have pictures below, I think. Yes. So as you can see on the right-hand side, the flagpole is completely rusted and all the paint is chipped away. So I was planning on, with the help of my troop and volunteers, having insured adults go up in a bucket truck and scraping the paint off and then repainting the flagpole. Because I, I did go up there and I found out that the pole is actually cemented into the ground, so there's no way that I could take it out of the ground. And one other thing I would be doing is replacing the torn flag at the top as well. And then also build, building two new wooden benches around. As you can see on the top left, the bench is cracked, so that's not a safe place for somebody to sit down on. And they are very old as well. And then also, I would want to rip out the bushes if I could. And if that's not possible, I can also trim them down and make them look nicer because they are overgrown. And then I would also build a stone slash brick walkway around the rock and flagpole to make the area look nicer and more presentable, like an actual memorial. And then finally, I would try and clean off the green oxidation on the actual plaque on the rock on the top right-hand side, because when it was first installed, it was actually a bronze color. So I would try and get the green, you know, off and make it look a little bit nicer. So that's all I have to say, and I would just like to hear comments.
Can I, uh, this is because, uh, Michael, first of all, thank you. I think it's a great project. I'm working with some communities now to get some public funding to kind of do some of the work you're doing. So I think first, as an aside, it's, it's a shame that a lot of communities don't maintain these spaces a little bit better. So we really appreciate folks like you that kind of take this on. I think it's a great project. If there's anything in terms of support that you need from us, I would hope that you would reach out. I think that we would all be really supportive of that.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment question, Michael. Thank you so much. This is a great, you did a great job with your presentation and it's a great project. My one question, comment was to maybe check in with the Lions, the Lions group, or, yeah, the Lions, right, about the oxidation. I know, um, previously, some of the groups really prefer the oxidation on the flag and some don't, so I would maybe just check in with some of our veterans groups to see how they feel about that.
It's a great point.
Okay.
But other than that, I think it's great and, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Love. Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
So, uh, Michael, thank you for coming forward with your proposal, and you did a very good job presenting it. Certainly would support the project. And I have from the area, Leah, I think you and I, we made the brief there last, uh, last year, and you definitely could use a little bit of cleaning up. So a little bit of, I guess, uh, from, from the past, from the last Eagle Scout project with Liam Dear, uh, on the oxidation, uh, just it's important that you check with the American Legion Post or whoever the Veteran Service Group is that's related to that, because we learned from the last memorial, the war memorial, that, um, memorial etiquette, I guess, would call for certain oxidation to stay the way it is. So, um, through the learning process, you'll have a lot to learn about it. So, and would be happy to set you up with the contacts in there. But Tom Rochala, who I'm sure you know, Mr. Rochala, he, he's related with the American Legion Post 310, so they should definitely be consulted early on. Mr. Buckley, who's, who's here, is our director of the DPW. He certainly would be a good asset that you could, uh, reach out to, get there on what would be progressable and whatnot, so when you write up your presentation. And, um, you're, you're doing this very smartly by coming to the board first to find out if it's something that's feasible. And for that, I would want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
We are here to help, so if you do need anything, don't be afraid to ask. Good job.
Okay. Thank you.
Mikey, what was your, our timeline?
Um, I was actually coming here today because of the coronavirus, so obviously, I'm not going to be able to do any work on it physically, but I can actually start doing all the paperwork and planning, which does take a long time, obviously, actually like several months. So I was planning on getting, being approved right now, so I can have this time while I can't do any work to the actual memorial, to start planning out my, my timeline plan. And then after all this is done, then I can have the time to do it.
I suppose you could build the benches too.
Yeah, I could do that.
Joe, did you have anything other than, I, the only thing I can think of is when he finally gets to the point where the bucket truck will come in, you know, they're going to need some cones to be put up, but it's just kind of a notification to people that memorial will be blocked.
We'll probably put the benches sooner rather than later. We took a bunch off the common this, um, early this spring that have failed already, so we'll get those out of there if they're dangerous, um, in advance. You don't have to do that. And I also unfortunately may have to look at the finish on the pole. There may be some abeyment issues we have to address.
Okay.
Sorry. One other question that I think Michael brought up in his presentation was about removing the bushes that are currently there versus if they would be allowed to remove, be removed versus just trimmed back. Looking at the picture, I mean, I've been up there and it has the picture attached. I don't know if the board feels one way or the other, if that's what he discussed with the DPW, um, just to address that side of his project also.
But, Mikey, offhand, I would argue that those bushes afford the memorial rock itself, the stones, some protection from the playground. But I could totally see why you'd want to trim the back and get them looking a little bit better. I would question if you went with putting nothing there, because it would leave it really exposed.
I think it was, was part of the proposal, incorrect if I'm wrong, to put in kind of like stone, like a, I don't want to say like a patio, well, like a stone, uh, encasing around the memorial, similar to what was done for last year's Eagle Scout project. I mean, if so, I think that would add a different aesthetic from the bushes too. My only other comment to the bushes possibly being removed is that that could be less maintenance for Joe's crew moving forward and just the aesthetic would remain better longer with less maintenance.
Yeah. That's a tough one. It's not like the problem where it's right out on the interstate.
Are, are, Michael, are you working with a, a veterans group or like, um, the Selectmen mentioned, uh, someone from the American Legion?
Uh, no, not yet. I, I came to you guys first just to see if I could actually be able to do this, so that's my next step.
I don't have a strong feeling about the bushes. I understand what Mitch was suggesting. Obviously, uh, I think I would talk to a veterans group to see what they want. You know, I don't know how much attention they want to draw to it or what type of events they typically have, but I think I would maybe, maybe poll some of them.
Okay.
It's a great idea, Joe.
I think Joe, I think Joe's, uh, suggestion is perfect, because I think the veterans, I think the American Legion did some work on the memorial down in front of the churches and the library. And I think they actually redid the bushes around there. They wanted something, if my memory serves me correctly, a few years ago. So maybe check in with them and see. It doesn't sound like the board has a strong feeling about it. What you put from Joe.
So do we, do we want to then, I guess, go ahead and vote for approval pending? Michael, keep us filled in and reach out to those groups to make sure that everyone's in the loop there? So, I guess I can, you know, make a motion.
Yeah. Can you do a motion basically for project planning?
Yep. So, uh, I want to go ahead and make a motion to approve, Michael, to go ahead with the project planning for his proposed project and keep the board updated concerning his efforts to reach out to the appropriate groups that would be involved and then come back to us prior to implementation.
And Joe, you'll let us know if something ends up happening that's significant in regards to the, the paint?
Yeah, it's a genuine concern.
I guess Joe, well, can we ask this a second first, and then I will ask Joe questions?
I'll second Mitch's, uh, motion.
Okay. So my, thank you, Leah. My question for Joe would be if there is environmental remediation needed with the pole, um, could that, I mean, I know that those, if it's containing lead, that would be probably pretty expensive.
We'd probably just replace the pole with that.
Okay. What, do you have any idea as to what the cost associated with that, rough ballpark, not holding it to it, what that might look like?
Mr. Nicholson could probably answer that better than I can, because believe it or not, there is a state contract for purchasing flagpoles, and we could probably get you a more accurate quote, but I want to say under 2,000.
I'd say well under that.
Most of the cost is in the labor and installation, and we could help with that.
Because the only, my only concern is that I don't want to have Michael do all this work, and then if it becomes an environmental issue, the costs.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't let that happen.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, we'll work with you, Mikey. No worries.
Okay.
Go with the word.
Just worry about the paint, that's all.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion and a second for, um, the Eagle Scout planning phase to move forward. Could I get a roll call?
Recede up. So, walk the ride.
One and I.
One. Unanimous, Michael. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
Nice job, Michael.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you to, um, both of our scout groups that came in, our first official guests. That was kind of a big deal for us. And you are very welcome to stay with us the whole time. However, we won't take it personally if we suddenly see your, your faces go away from the Zoom meeting and you want to go and do something else. But thank you so much again, both of you. Uh, we are going to move on to the town administrator update, which is long and data-packed.
Yes. And I'll say, if you see me looking to the side here, I've got my dual screen going on with my notes here, so it's not me, uh, looking somewhere else. But we do have a lot of updates related to the current COVID-19 outbreak here in town and just across the state in general. Just as a reminder, President Trump extended the social distancing guidelines through April 30th. That is the request that people remain at least six feet apart from each other to help slow the spread from person to person. Governor Baker has also announced that he is extending his orders to close schools, close non-essential businesses, and the state home advisory through Monday, May 4th as well. With that said, those orders have also been expanded to all state parks and beaches, and, uh, all state campgrounds have been closed, and the, uh, opening up the Rutland campground has been delayed as well until these requirements are lifted. We're still highly recommending that people go out and go on walks on the trip and go visit the parks to walk around, be outside, get some fresh air. The parks that are closed offer the cabins or the sleeping areas where you can be together at one place, um, and there's potential to have a larger group. The same thing's been done for certain parking lots, only that they just make sure people aren't parking in a parking lot to get together, uh, which is something that has happened. These wanted to affect there. But all of this information can be found on the state coronavirus information website, mass.gov/covid19. You can get all the information there. You can also call 211, which is the new state public health hotline, or you can get text message updates by texting covid19 to 888-777. So you can see all of the new things that have been put in place prior to common law of the federal government to that. Here in Rutland, we have also been doing our part to not only one follow these guidelines, but still, um, continue to try to stop the spread of the virus here in Rutland as well. Our public buildings do remain closed to the public through May 4th in conjunction with the governor's order. Uh, just as a reminder, though, we are all still working, uh, and are available via phone or email to provide the citizens with the services that are there in order to, uh, follow the guidelines of 10 people per event, which is another order that the governor has extended through May 4th. Some departments have gone on to a rotating judge group. With that said, uh, if anyone leaves a voicemail or a, send an email, we'll get back to you as soon as possible. Just because the department may be working out of the office doesn't mean they're not working at home. Uh, our department heads do have remote access, because in fact, that's one of the things that I will say Rutland had prepared, uh, before any of this started, that really helped us in the long run, is we have unlimited, like. licenses for our employees to work from their own devices at home. Uh, we've got employees who are, the department head is working in the office and their, uh, other staff is working at home and they actually have the ability to put print on their home computer and it prints up in the community hall, uh, where their work documents are. So we actually had that set in place that many cities and towns are now wondering how to do and how to pay for it, which we are, we're having the ball back. Uh, same thing with our e-permit thing software, um, and our disposal system that we just put in place for last year. We've made consistent strides over the past year to try to bring these services of town hall into the comfort of people's homes, um, so that when we needed it, we had it and we need it and we have it. Uh, so I can't thank the department heads enough for just getting the ball rolling, uh, with these, these ideas initiatives that we've had, um, to be able to still provide the services that we provide here in Rutland. Um, there has been a lot of, um, other changes that we've implemented here, um, that have been hard to make, uh, but they've been deemed necessary after we've talked to public health officials, again, both at the state and local level, uh, particularly closing the playground equipment at, uh, the community center, memorial field and behind the schools. Uh, the reason being is we don't have the adequate staff to make sure that all the equipment is properly sanitized when the kids go on. So for instance, if we go and sanitize all the playground equipment at eight o'clock in the morning, someone goes to visit the playground from nine to nine thirty, uh, who may have been exposed to the virus and, uh, with sneezing by the equipment or stuff like that. And then someone else comes around at ten o'clock, well, we're not gonna be able to get back out there to clean it for another day or two. Uh, so that's why we've closed those structures and locked the gates around those, uh, we've also secured the basketball hoop at the, uh, basketball court. Other reason being is after the governor put in place the ten-person, uh, maximum limit and, uh, the social distancing requirements were extended, we had probably five or six pickup games down at Memorial Field where the groups were sixteen to twenty, uh, people in total. And we understand that it does give people a way to get out of the house and we do still encourage you to get out of the house and visit the park and walk around, uh, but we have to take the precautions necessary to make sure that the virus is spreading in an hour, in an area that we're allowing it to spread. Uh, so that's why we've had to take those, uh, precautions there as well. Uh, our unit pay system is still up and running and the, uh, lockbox for town hall is still available for anyone who's looking to pay their bills, uh, to the town, even though you can't drop it off as a person. We are regularly checking the lockbox and the unit pay system goes directly to the treasurer collective office. Uh, so the, we're encouraging residents to take advantage of those options. Uh, we've extended the excise tax payment deadline through April 8th. However, later on in the meeting, we'll be talking about that. Uh, and we do wanna say that residents are struggling for any reason to give our staff that's treasury collective office called. Uh, while we do have to keep things working as close to normal as possible, we do understand the gravity of the situation for some of our residents here, uh, and I'm willing to talk with our residents through these issues. Uh, let me just see what else I have up here, uh, before we get to the next. There have been a lot of different bills that have been filed in the legislature in response to the outbreaks, uh, but we're encouraging residents to wait until they hear confirmation either from the updates that we will continue to give, both online and through our YouTube, uh, channel and our, uh, RT TV, uh, programming wire will be continuing to update the town as to what's going on, uh, as there's been over close to two hundred bills, uh, filed just in response to this. Uh, what I can say is that there are some bills that have been enacted into law that do affect Rutland, uh, that I'd like to go over quickly. Uh, we'll be talking about town meeting and local elections later on in the agenda of the, uh, laws that allow us to extend those have both been, uh, adopted by the legislature and signed by the governor. Uh, the fiscal year budget legislation that would allow us to postpone our town meeting until after the June 30th, end of the fiscal year and continue on a one-twelve budget by month until we are able to have a town meeting, uh, has been enacted by the governor as well. Uh, so we will talk about that later on. Uh, the statute that allows cities and towns to have first right of refusal on land in, uh, chapter sixty-one A protection, uh, has been amended for cities and towns during the time that the current state of emergency is in effect. The ninety-day, uh, period in which a town will have the right to exercise its first right of refusal is extended indefinitely during the course of the state of emergency. Uh, after the state of emergency, the ninety days goes into effect. Uh, we also have the ability now to delay tax payments, uh, that we're normally not able to be delayed longer than April 8th and May 1st up until June 1st, but we cannot delay any longer than June 1st because we need the money to be received during the fiscal year. Uh, the statute, uh, also now allows, uh, food establishments that had permits for on-premise consumption of alcohol to allow for, um, takeout and delivery of wine and malt beverages. Uh, so for our establishments that do have, uh, did have on-premise consumption, uh, permits and licenses, uh, can now, uh, you can now call up with a food order if the requirement there has to be some food purchase with it, um, order a can of beer or a bottle of wine to go with your takeout order. Uh, the Health Board of Health is actually currently meeting and talking about how that will be part of it, uh, but that is an option that is available. Uh, so the other major changes that have happened in state law, um, and I should say everything that I've mentioned is all part of the same bill that was signed on Friday by the governor as, uh, the next two and the next one from there. I understand that this may be confusing to some here. If there's any questions in the meeting, just feel free to cut me off at any time or if you're at home watching this and have any questions, feel free to email me at any time. My office will get that. Uh, the statutory, uh, limits on people who are retired, uh, now being able to come back and work for the town. Uh, if you're a state retiree, you were limited to the number of hours that you were allowed to work from necessity before that began to eat into your pension. Those limits have been, um, indefinitely waived until the end of the state of emergency that's been declared by the governor. So now, uh, if a person is a retiree and now working for the town, uh, so long as the building is closed and necessary precautions are being taken, that person is now able to work full-time or before they will recant actual ever. Uh, the last thing that was in this law that was passed on Friday is there have been extensions now for all permit issuing boards, such as conservation commission, the planning board, in which case there were previously had a forty-five day, um, timeline in which they had to act on a permit. That timeline has been indefinitely suspended to forty-five days after the declared state of emergency has been lifted. So that was the bill that was all passed on Friday. Are there any questions on that one before we move on to the next? Okay, good. The other two are a lot shorter. Uh, the other one allows us to, uh, postpone an election by vote of the select board or both of, both of the board of residents. I need to get here and talk about that later on in the agenda. And, uh, the other one was the, uh, the bill that would allow us to postpone town meeting outside of the regular statutory requirements that we will often be talking about later. So that is what's been going on at the legislature's website and you can find summaries of all of these actions on, uh, our town council, uh, website, K T Law. Uh, it breaks it all down, uh, out there and even further into the bills I didn't wanna touch on because they may not directly relate to us. Uh, we are still continuing our takeout challenge. It ends tomorrow at noon, so if you do have your receipts from seven of our ten restaurants, uh, feel free to either take a picture of them and email them to me or drop them off in the box in the lobby of the public safety building. We do wanna remind residents that while takeout has been deemed a state option by our public health officials, uh, still need to take the necessary precautions of social distancing while inside the food establishment or, um, taking the food out of its packaging, insulating it regularly and washing your hands in between, uh, to make sure you are following the, um, the social distancing guidelines while your business is established as well. Uh, and like I said earlier, we will continue to update the public through our YouTube and cable addresses as different changes happen. Uh, one of our goals is to remain transparent with the residents, uh, because there's just so much going on and it is constantly in the minds of, um, people who are on Facebook, online, listening to the radio, watching TV. So we wanna make sure that the residents have all the information that's accurate just because there is so much information out there. Uh, there was a, uh, video going around on Facebook over the weekend that the governor was suspending alcohol sales in the Commonwealth on April 2nd. And then when you clicked on it, it was actually a Rick Roll video, just how many people would click on it, how many people would share it without actually seeing it and not realizing it was a fool's joke that someone had that went viral, uh, across the state. Uh, these are examples of why, um, we're all reminding you to make sure that the news you're hearing about what's going on is accurate and first, and it's one of the reasons why we will be able to update you, uh, constantly to make sure that you do have the most accurate information possible and not fall for a prank on Facebook that someone took too
Like you can use the term fake news. It's okay. It's become popular now.
Uh, the council on aging is looking for volunteers currently for, um, backup meals on wheel drivers as well as residents would be willing to take grocery store or pharmacy runs for our three citizens here in town. If you'd like to volunteer for those options, please contact Director Nancy Niffen at the council on aging, either by email or by phone, supposed to be on the town's website. Uh, and due to the current regu-, uh, regulations and restrictions that have been placed, the recreation department's annual Easter egg hunt is now a virtual Easter egg hunt. Uh, details on how to protect the victim that can be found on the, uh, on the town's website under the recreation department. Uh, our marijuana, our, yeah.
Sorry, I have a question about the volunteering for the council on aging and other volunteer roles within the town, I guess, not specific for county on aging. What safety precautions are being put in place for any, um, individuals who do volunteer? Are there any?
We have masks on that we'll, uh, be giving them here. We're working that out with the, um, board of health.
Also
Anything?
I'm sorry, Leah, there's, uh, mandatory chore checks by elder services, I think, for all, everyone that wants to volunteer.
Correct. Um, the marijuana, uh, our file, the address of the next meeting, just because this was our first Ginnie Pig meeting, if you will, uh, for having members of the public have full access to the Zoom platform. Uh, so hopefully we'll be able to get to that, um, sooner than later, but because we concerned that we're addressed, we're not getting, uh, we are pushing that back another meeting. Uh, and I do want to add a couple of stuff here as well, um, that the, uh, other churches in town have reached out to my office, uh, just to, one, check in on how we're doing, but two, just to update us on some stuff they're doing there. Uh, we do not have say over what they are doing, um, over at the churches under the First Amendment Establishment Club. Uh, we have been notified that the, uh, congregational church is planning a car-based, um, Easter service for this week, in which residents must remain in their cars. Uh, and we will, uh, continue to work with them, uh, as well as our other nonprofits, businesses, community partners, uh, throughout the course of this process, just because again, there is so much information out there that we'll be working together with people to make sure that, uh, things are following what they actually need to follow. Uh, the last thing I wanna say is congratulations to, uh, half of our cases, uh, confirmed COVID-19, uh, patients in the town of Rutland who have fully recovered and have been released from quarantine because they are, um, vetted. Our board of health is currently needing to discuss when we'll be able to release , uh, Rutland numbers. We have been, uh, receiving a lot of requests from the public about our numbers. Uh, Department of Public Health at the Commonwealth has asked and we put a hold on that just for the time being, uh, while they come up with some guidelines that they are releasing to our local courts of health, uh, when those numbers will be released. Again, we do not release under any circumstances name, age or address of those patients. Can release the numbers once we get that guidance and our board of health is talking about that currently. We'll hopefully have an answer to that on Friday. Uh, but I can say, uh, the residents who have been confirmed positive, half of them have fully recovered and are back out fully healthy, uh, and it was great to hear that and we wish the rest, um, the best of luck as they continue to work through this and we'd like to know that the entire town is behind them on that. So that is the bulk and the, actually all of my updates here, and that was long enough. So if there are any questions, please feel free to, um, ask them if somebody's able to answer them to my desk.
Questions? So now we're gonna interrupt Seth, uh, from his work and have him start in on our five minutes.
Good evening. Um, just to give you an update, what's going on in the public safety world here, uh, in town. Um, as a management, management director, we've been in contact, uh, with MEMA and Department of Public Health daily, uh, updating our staffing levels, um, and we have to give that every day to make sure that if we have needs of our staff needs to get tested or quarantined, uh, we update that daily. Uh, we've had some, uh, significant call volume increase, uh, over the last month. Uh, we transported over a hundred patients, uh, from town, uh, to the city, uh, with suspected cases. Um, but again, we are following up with the hospital every day to get updates, uh, to make sure that our exposure, uh, is limited, uh, and that we continue to protect our staff. Uh, we've been working with MEMA to, uh, get additional PPE. Uh, National Guard, uh, delivered a load to us last week, uh, which we are very grateful for. Um, but we had a significant stockpile to start with early on, which we're very fortunate. Um, this goes back to the H1N1 epidemic about, uh, eight or nine years ago that we had some, uh, stockpile left over. Um, so we were able to utilize that on the early onset of this. Uh, again, um, it gets very, uh, stressful, uh, worrying about, uh, your staff and making sure that they are safe, but also the staff is concerned about going back home to their families, uh, as well. So we gotta make sure that, uh, we keep them safe and their family safe as well. Um, other than that, um, things are actually moving pretty well. Uh, the cases we do have in town, um, the ones that have come back positive, we have not had any direct contact with, uh, which has been pretty fortunate to us. And that also means that they've not rose, risen to the level of needing to be, uh, transported immediately to the hospital as well. So that's all a good sign, uh, as well. Um, looking at some of the data, I think the social distancing that we are doing in town is really, uh, made a difference. Um, it is clear to us on the data we have that we're not spreading it amongst ourselves by going to the store or getting, going to the gas station or anything like that. So we're doing that job, um, as town people, uh, in protecting our neighbors, uh, as well. Uh, other than that, I don't know if Chief Monaco has anything to say on the police department side. Uh, we do have a company come into the public safety building. They will be coming this Friday and every week. Um, I'm sure you've seen some of the, uh, fire departments, uh, post on social media. The company comes in, they spray the vehicles, uh, spray the, uh, sleeping quarters of the staff, um, and we are starting to, uh, ramp up that project, uh, this week and we'll be doing it, uh, every week for the next eight weeks, uh, to continue to protect our staff. Uh, so that's pretty much where we are. And anyone have any questions?
I have a quick question, Seth. Um, this is Mitch. Uh, I worked for a state health agency during H1N1 about a decade ago, and you had brought that up as a reason in terms of your stockpile for PPE. Um, I think a lot of people I've talked to in the community have been troubled with, you know, that like Mike was saying, the things you read in the news that may not necessarily be true. Um, you know, and the nightly news altogether is, is kinda terrifying. Do you see, I guess, in terms of your response, uh, your responses, what you're doing, uh, are there any similarities between, you know, the number or the volume that you saw during H1N1? Because I don't know if you, obviously you weren't in this community, but I think you were probably in a similar position. Uh, is there any similarity there? Is it something where, uh, you know, it's a totally different animal altogether?
This has definitely been a totally different, um, situation where H1N1 was really not, um, emphasized as much in the press, um, or on, on the news, on the news cycle every night. Um, but we did receive a lot of, um, stockpile, uh, of equipment. Um, the call volume we're getting is, well, the calls that we are getting is, the problem is, is people are afraid to go to the hospital, which I understand why, but if they do have medical conditions, they are delaying themselves or delaying care because they don't wanna go to the hospital. And some, um, primary care physicians are doing telemedicine, um, and they're not allowed to go to the doctor's office. So I think we're just kicking the can down the road that we're going to see a rapid increase of increase of call volume very quickly, um, because people are delaying care on other medical issues as well, um, and it's unfortunate, um, but we will work through it, um, as we, uh, continue on. Uh, one other thing I want to do bring up is we have been working, uh, with UMass, um, who is our, uh, medical control hospital. And we are gearing up to do telemedicine, uh, in home, um, on ambulance calls, um, so we'll be able to provide that service, uh, very quickly. Um, so if a patient seems not to be required to be transported but needs to be evaluated, we can do that in home virtually, uh, with consultation with the hospital, uh, with the doctors. So we are working towards that very quickly. And in the next, uh, several weeks, we'll probably be doing, um, in some other towns, we'll be doing is, uh, more testing, uh, locally, uh, where the fire department will be involved directly with, uh, uh, testing as well. Uh, so that's where we're headed. Um, you're talking with the Board of Health, I would say this fall, uh, or early next winter, we could be into a mass, um, uh, flu clinic or inoculations or, um, you know, so we'll be ramping up that as well as we continue forward, so.
Thank you.
Jeff? You just need to unmute.
Um, I may, uh, this is Jeff. Seth, uh, thank you for the, uh, the update. And I have noticed, because I do listen to this here also, um, extraordinary number of continuous calls for service that come in, and several of them result in patient refusals in there. One of them was an address that called, uh, 911 because they had stomach pain or flu like symptoms for 10 days and then the ambulance, the medics, uh, and, and the fire department responded into the situation only to report five minutes later, you know, a clear patient refusal. Kind of makes sense explaining that people are afraid to, uh, go to the hospital and maybe they decided that it's probably safer to, uh, you know, seek their doctor remotely. But my question is, do we bill? Do we bill their insurance for, for our response and, uh, going into their, uh, uncleaned environments?
Uh, currently right now, Jeff, unfortunately, we are only allowed to bill, um, for any transport. So if we go into a house, treat a patient, here's a perfect example, you have a diabetic who's gone into, uh, a diabetic coma or anything, you go in, you start IV, you give medication, they become alert and orientated and conscious and talking to you, they sign a refusal, we cannot bill for that, um, even though we've used our supplies and our medications, uh, similar to, uh, this type of thing, not a refusal, um, yeah, it's basically that's what your tax dollar provides, uh, is us to come in and assist, uh, when they call.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think when you do bill, it's called taxes.
Correct.
Right. I mean, those aren't the people, you know?
And, and, you know, that also goes on the, you know, the police side, you know, every, every time Deveraux has a, uh, an unruly student, you know, it's a call for the police to, to stop and go into that environment, an unknown, an unknown sanitary situation in a pandemic times, and, uh, it's, it's business as usual. So I, my concern is, I don't want to go too much into a rant, is that, um, at what point do we say it's okay for our fire police chiefs to say, you know what, I'm not, uh, we're not going to send our, our people to the, you know, the burning permit call, uh, because, because, you know, we're, we're in guarded conditions right now and, uh, you're not responding for every, for every, uh, call that doesn't appear.
So, you know, we, are we talking, just to be clear, this is going kind of down a really interesting path, but are we talking about the not blocking the calls? Uh, I just really want to make sure that we're not-
Oh, cool. Let's, let's hold on a sec. So we, uh, I'll let you go and then let's have Seth respond.
In a little bit of a, a similar thread to Jeff, but also something Seth said with the, um, possibility that EMTs and first responders will be doing more telehealth and kind of doing some of that triage instead of transporting, um, is there any plan or opportunity in place to bill for that where the first responders are doing some more kind of telehealth?
Well, yeah, Leah, you bring up a good point because, um, partly, uh, this whole pro- process, uh, telehealth was not really allowed to be used in the hospital setting, uh, because it was Medicare would not pay for it, but that has now changed. Um, we are working with our ambulance billing provider to see what happens, uh, because we are Medicaid provider, a Medicare provider, um, do we have to become licensed in a certain fact, uh, way to recoup some of that? Uh, so that is in the process as well, um, because this is going to not just be a national thing, this thing will be a national thing, um, so we will be working on that as well. Uh, and to, uh, to talk to Jeff's point, uh, about limiting exposure, uh, we have just pretty strict policies in place as far as, uh, who enters and exits our residence. Um, we respond to, to a scene with, uh, um, three or four staff. Uh, only one person is entering the house in full protective, uh, PPE, one to limit exposure, but also to limit the, the waste of, uh, utilizing the PPE, uh, that may or may not be necessary. Um, so we're only sending one person in to evaluate if additional staff is needed, uh, that they're, uh, gouting up and, uh, heading in to assist, uh, as well. So we are limiting that, uh, similar to what we are doing with the police officers. They are being told to stage and not enter a residence unless, uh, we deem them, um, necessary for our protection, um, or a situation requires additional staffing as well. Uh, so we are also limiting, uh, exposure of our staff to the best extent possible, uh, and also by preserving, uh, uh, PPE quantity that we currently have.
Thank you so much. Um, can I just say thank you to all of them? I mean, fire, police, all of the first responders, even DPW and animal control, the, um, dispatch, everybody, you guys are really taking the big hit for all of us. Thank you.
Let's, um, Jeff, is it all right if we have Chief Monaco go and then we have a follow-up and they can sort of both tag team it?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'm, I'm basically just going to echo a lot of what Seth said. There's a lot of, uh, anxiety, just trying to keep everybody safe and keep everybody at unexposed as possible. Um, see, at the Jeff's point, we're not, we're not going to stop responding to calls. Uh, the only thing that we've stopped responding to are medical calls and fire calls. And like Seth said, we're, uh, we're still going, we're just not going in the house, um, unless they need us, unless it's priority one or mental health call or something like that. Um, we're still responding to everything, we're just changing the way we respond to calls. Um, I have a three-page protocol that I've given to the staff with, uh, all sorts of suggestions on how to deal with this stuff, uh, particularly, uh, non-emergency calls, deal with it via phone if possible. Um, if you do have to have a person-to-person contact, you know, make sure you follow all the social, social distancing guidelines, do not enter homes unless you absolutely have to. Um, and we've actually told the guys recently, stop with, um, traffic enforcement unless it's something egregious in your presence. I really just trying to minimize contact with the public. Um, what else have we got? Uh, we also have some protocols in the station for limiting lobby contact. Anybody that comes in the lobby is being dealt with through the window. If we have to have an in-person conversation with somebody, it's always going to be done in the interview room. So that, like, all conversations, we're in one room, it's easily, uh, contaminated afterwards. Uh, firearms licensing, we're still doing firearms licensing, but same way, all the applications and stuff coming through the window and people are going to be asked to come back and later they do their fingerprinting. And, uh, now a couple of programs that we've been doing are suspended right now, obviously school resource. Uh, we actually suspended that before school started. We have an overdose response program that we've suspended, uh, internships suspended, the Deveraux Works program suspended. Still the best we can. It's kind of hard for everybody because every, everything we've promoted is proactive police work, uh, community policing interaction. We, so it's, it's, uh, tougher for everybody to adapt to this new style of no contact police.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff, did you, did you have a follow-up or did he?
Real brief, I just wanted to echo what Leah said, and that we couldn't be more grateful for the first responders and, and really putting themselves out there. So my question to the chiefs is what, realistically, what can the town be doing for, um, for both your departments to, to better help you guys, getting you all the tools that you need, especially, uh, through the next two weeks? What, what, give us some ideas, what could we be doing for you?
I, I think we're really well supported already and, uh, thank you all for the support.
Yeah, I agree. Um, you know, the support that we've been getting, um, not only from the board, but from, uh, our town administrator, uh, the Board of Health, uh, has been fantastic. Um, the town nurse has been phenomenal. Um, I give her, she, she deserves all the credit. Um, she's the one that's actually going into the confirmed, uh, positive households and meeting with them daily and discussing, um, you know, uh, treatment plans and, uh, um, you know, so it, that's, that's the one that really deserves, uh, a lot of credit, um, to do that on a daily basis.
Thanks again, Chiefs.
Thank you both so much. Um, all right. Yes.
If I could just add one thing here too, just for the members of the public who may not be aware of how the process works, um, when we do have a confirmed case, uh, every city in town in the Commonwealth is required by law to, uh, have a town or city nurse. Uh, we, uh, regionalize our nurse, she's a town employee. Uh, so what happens is if someone tests positive, uh, for the virus, that nurse then gets a call from the Department of Public Health at the Commonwealth. That nurse then notifies, uh, Rich Stevens, our health agent, who then notifies Chief Knight and myself that we have a confirmed case. When he notifies, uh, Chief Knight, uh, he gives the person's address so that our first responder to know if they're responding to a call at that address, that they're responding to a situation in which they could be exposed to the virus. Um, and that information is spread with our dispatchers and our police officers. That way they are protected as well, and the dispatchers know how to talk to the person on the phone to get that information. Uh, the, uh, nurse then visits that person very frequently, one to, uh, recreate, uh, a contact list, that's the people they may have come in contact with during the, uh, two-week period beforehand before symptoms may have shown. Uh, that way they will reach out and then contact everyone who has come up on that list to advise them to self-quarantine and be tested so that they can see as well. So there is a set process that the Commonwealth outlines that we are, um, following for that there too. And I do want to echo what Seth said earlier, is that we don't have any community spread case, they're all cases of someone having an exposure at work, um, and then coming back home and then, uh, that being how it's, uh, come into the community, it's not anyone here in the community spreading it. Um, I did send a email to the board updating them about, uh, updating you all about the, uh, town's response to it. And one of the things I do want to bring up there is that I did mention that our health agent, Rich Stevens, and I did talk about putting in an order of things like, um, alcohol wipes, syringes, surgical napkins, things like that, uh, that we would need should we have to do a mass inoculation and vaccination, uh, those supplies arrived at this point. So we are all set. The reason why we wanted to do those now is even though the vaccine is not ready nor will it be for quite some time, where there's a shortage of PPE right now because everyone is looking for it, we're going to have that same situation if we have a, um, mass vaccination later on down the road, where everyone's going to be looking for the materials needed for that at that time. So since those do not have an expiration date, uh, we bought as much as we could for what we need, um, now and it arrived at this point. So we are prepared when that arrives as well. Uh, and I do want to make a comment too, that our health agent is also weekly doing inspections at Deveraux to make sure that they are following their proper, um, cleaning procedures and distancing procedures to make sure that if we do need to respond to a call there, um, everything is done properly. And so far, there's been absolutely no complaints from Rich. So I just wanted to echo that up there. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Um, all right, moving on. Um, we have Rebecca Tuttle, our treasure collector. She's sadly not with us on video. We would have liked to have seen you, Rebecca. Next time.
There we go. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, good. Hi, everybody. Yeah, I don't have any video, so that's okay. Um, I just wanted to, we are coming up on our, changing directions a little bit, we're coming up on our annual, um, health insurance renewal, um, that we need to do. Um, it's open enrollment usually during the month of May. Um, I met with the Insurance Advisory Committee on February 26th, February 26th and, um, March 12th. Um, and we, uh, thank you. Yep, there is a, um, we received a 3.7% increase for the, um, Blue Cross and Blue Shield that we have offered to our employees through Maya. Um, that was the middle of the road. Uh, we switched over to Maya to, from Fallon, uh, last year, so we agreed to a two-year agreement with them. So we took the, when we were given the middle of their average increase, which was the 3.7% um, amount that we received. Um, so that is what we are proposing. We did look and see if there was any plan changes that could be done, um, to reduce that, and there was only, we would have to have reduced, increased co-pays for, um, emergency room visits and day surgery, and it would have only reduced the increase to a 3.18% versus 3.7%, which is about $3,000. So overall, um, we also, they also gave us the amount for dental insurance. Uh, there was a decrease of 1.39% in our, um, from our current, current plan, uh, with no changes to the benefits as well. Um, so overall, with, um, those, the 3.7% increase to health and the 1.39 decrease to dental, um, the overall increase to our budget from FY20 to FY21 is about $92,000, which is a 12.04% increase, as you can see there. Um, mostly that is because we have additional staff. Um, so that, that's, that's, this is the plan that we're recommending, uh, um, for the town's employees. Um, we also are going to be switching, um, providers for our flexible spending system. Um, we've had, we've used task in the past and we've had, um, I've had a few administrative issues and customer service issues, um, with them. The enterprise just continues to go up 3% with, with not much to show for it. Uh, we did get three, um, quotes from three different companies and did meet with two of them. The one that we are recommending to go with is a cafeteria plan advisor. They, um, they weren't the least expensive, but they are in Massachusetts, they're based out of Braintree, and the majority of towns in Massachusetts use them for their flexible spending, um, um, programs. Um, so that, that is what we are recommending. Um, we're also going to offer the health insurance buyout offer to employees again. Um, what this is, is if we have employees that are on our plan and have been enrolled for at least two years, they, if they can find, um, if they can go on their spouse's plan, uh, we will give them a buyout at the end of the fiscal year. If they come off of a family plan, it'll be a, like, $5,000, um, buyout, and if they come off an individual plan, it'll be $1,900, uh, for the fiscal year. Um, so we will put all of this out with the, um, oh, during the open enrollment, which is usually May 1st through May 31st. Um, and there'll be a lot of education on, on the flexible spending plan, uh, for people. One of the other things that we'll, we'll be doing, offering through the flexible spending is, um, a dependent care option, um, which is they can put pre-tax dollars away, uh, up to $5,000 that will go towards their, um, daycare or after-school care for, for children. So that is, um, something that we'll be offering as well. It's completely voluntary and it has no additional cost to us, but cafeteria plan advisors will be, um, managing that for us as well and our employees. So I'm looking for the town's, uh, the, the board's approval to accept the new insurance rate from Maya and, um, go with this, uh, package of, of benefits for our employees for FY21.
Motion to adjourn.
Anybody have any questions? Any questions or- Any questions or?
I can, I can make a motion if we're ready for a motion. Uh, motion to approve the rates is presented.
Second. Is there any more discussion? All right, roll call.
Residi, aye.
Phil, aye. Buck, aye.
Wait, man, aye. But, Becky, thank you so much, I know this was a challenge, I mean, it always...
Yeah. Eric, we're running a little late this year in getting that approved, so we're, um, I appreciate your getting, squeezing this onto the agenda, thank you very much.
Thank you, Becky.
Um, you're welcome.
Good job.
You wanna go move on to the next item?
Yeah, go right ahead.
So the next, um, agenda item is the tax due date update. Um, again, I, I, Mike went over the legislative changes that came out on Friday. Um, part, part of that, major part for my office, is the, um, local option to extend the tax, the due dates on property tax bills. Um, so the proposal allows the town, under a local option, to extend, um, the due date for real estate and personal property tax bills to June first. Um, we're coming up, the, the fourth quarterly payment is due May fourth. This would allow it to be pushed out to June first, so there would be no tax, so there would be no interest or penalty, um, accruing un- until, um, the, the new due date, which would be June first. Um, the others, there's two of, there's also a local option to extend the due date for exemptions and deferral applications, so that would be anybody who, uh, a veteran that wanted an exemption or, um, a, a senior who applied for an elderly, elderly abatement, um, that usually is, uh, the deadline is April first, and this would push it out again to June first. Um, the other piece to this, so there's three pieces to this, that we, are all local options. Um, it includes a local option to waive interest and other penalty for late payments of excise tax, real estate, personal predicament, or water and sewer bills, um, through, anything that was issued with a due date on or after March tenth, um, and there wouldn't be any interest or penalty until June thirtieth of twenty-twenty. So there are three pieces to this. Um, my recommendation, with given the situation that we're in, um, is to push the due date from May fourth to June first for real estate and personal property. Um, also extend the due date for the exemption from April first to June first, and allow the, um, the waiving of interest and penalties until June thirtieth for, right now we have real estate, personal property, um, there are excise commitments, there will be five excise commitments with due dates that were, um, after March tenth, and there will be one water and sewer bill that's planned to go out on April thirtieth that will be due June first. Um, so we have quite a bit of, um, bills out there that this will affect, but they are still, I will say that, um, on our motor vehicle excise bills that were due, are due April eighth, originally due April first, but we pushed them out to April eighth, we have seventy percent of them paid right now. Um, and in terms of real estate and personal property, the, um, about sixty-five to seventy-five percent of them come in through, um, tax services, so, which they accrue, you know, you pay your mortgage and you have your tax bills, tax amounts escrowed, so the tax services are holding and the banks are holding the money, so it, they should come in as usual on the, um, on or near the May fourth due date. So cash flow wise, I don't think we'll have an issue on this, and we will work with every taxpayer that calls in, um, and, uh, attend to every situation that we, that arises. So, I'd like to open it up to questions, because that's a lot of information and a lot of changes.
I think you answered, um, definitely any questions that I had, and you obviously would have wanted more recommendation. Uh, I, I don't know that, I'm not really seeing any situation where we would be having an argument about this, considering where we are. It's, it's nice to hear that you think our cash flow won't be too significantly affected, or maybe that's still early days for that, but...
So what this does is it moves the due date for the real estate and personal property to that June first, but it allows so that the other due dates on the other bills, we just won't be collecting interest and penalties up through, um, June thirtieth. So it'll give people a little extra time to pay them without being penalized. Um, and it allows our office to waive, because normally, uh, Mass General, Mass General law only allows, allows me to waive up to fifteen dollars in interest, so this allows for more of that. Um, and we will have all the bills up on Unipay for people to pay half of the due date, you know, normally it would, it would shut off after the due date, so we're gonna, because they're just gonna be fulfilled, the bill amounts, we're gonna continue to update that, um, without interest, so they'll be up for a longer period of time on the, um, Unipay system, so they're up to be able to pay it.
Does anybody have questions? Um, if, if there are no questions, this is enough that I think we should take three pieces separately. So the first will be to extend real estate and personal property tax deadline from May first to June first, or if you had a different date, but that's our drop date.
So I can make a motion to extend the date, real estate and personal property taxes from May first to June first, twenty-twenty.
I'll second.
Phil, aye.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Residi, aye.
Phil, aye. Buck, aye.
Wait, man, aye. Devi, aye. And, um, and Tamika, this will include all taxes as indicated, um, in the KP and out for sections ten to twelve of the Act that was included.
Right, so this, this one is for just real estate and personal property in this section.
All right, our next one will be, Becky, the, the excise rate.
Actually, the, um, exemptions, which I just wanted to comment that I did talk to Harold from, um, RRG, uh, this is the local option to extend the due date per exemptions and deferral app- applications. Um, trying to see if that's on.
Okay. So if we're looking, I think that's number six, where Mike is.
Yes, yes.
Hold on. All right, so, uh, this is, um, the motion will be to take the local option available for exemption, uh, for application of exemption.
Yes, yes, so they'll extend it from April first to a date to June first.
I'll make a motion that the, um, town take the local option to extend the application for exemption of taxes from April first to June first, twenty-twenty.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Residi, aye.
Phil, aye. Buck, aye.
Wait, man, aye. Devi, aye. Tamika, thank you. And then our last one, with the excise, uh, and the other.
Right, so this is section eleven.
Yep.
Which...
Oh, the phrasing, it's... Becky, do you want us to just note essential services, or do you want to list, because for us it's excise, betterment, water, or sewer?
Right, so it says any excise, tax, betterment assessment or apportionment, water rate, annual sewer use, so that what we have is, we've got excise, this has got real estate and personal property, um, and water and sewer bills. That's, that's what's out there that we want to be able to waive the interest and penalty on until June thirtieth.
Okay, so if we could read that motion, it would include that, um, that paragraph that starts similarly, the, the content of it, and include the, um, comment that no essential services may be terminated?
Right.
Jeff, uh, make a motion that the, uh, town extend any excise tax, real estate, water and sewer through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, is that enough?
Yep, so we're waiving payment of interest and penalty, and that was for all bills with a due date on or after March tenth.
But it also includes the excise taxes, right?
Yes, so any, any bills that was issued with a due, due date on or after March tenth, this, what we're doing is allowing the waiver, the waiving of interest and penalty through June thirtieth.
Got it, so moved. I'll second if that gets a swing. Repeat.
Yep, just to reiterate, this is a motion to waive payment of interest and other penalty for our list here, which is excise, tax, betterment, or apportionment, water rates, rate, and any other charge from March tenth inclusive until June thirtieth. All right, uh...
I can provide, like, more wording if Tamika needs it, or...
Okay.
Leah, I have a question. Do we need to include that no essential services may be terminated, um, for non-payment?
Can that be a friendly amendment, so, are you okay with that, Jeff?
Yes, please. Is that, do we need, out of, of pure curiosity, do we need to actually pass that? Because it seems like the governor already ordered it into effect, I don't think we need to vote on it, right?
It's a little gray, it was part of section eleven, but you're right, I don't think it's technically part of the local option, if that makes sense.
Right. Yeah, the governor has said it's part of it.
Uh, we can point in, Leah, that we acknowledge, uh, the governor's order, how's that?
Okay, no worries.
Great, sounds good.
Great, uh, roll call.
Do we get a second for my motion?
Uh, yeah, I thought Mitch seconded it.
Jeff, you made the motion, I seconded it. All right, thank you. So residi, aye.
Phil, aye. Buck, aye.
Wait, man, aye.
Devi, aye. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much, much, um, and again, I just wanted to say that we're gonna extend the date that they, people can pay online with the Unipay system. Um, we are here taking phone calls and, and talking to people, um, if anybody has situations where, where they need to do payment plans, we are, we're working with people. Um, there's a Dropbox in the front of the building that they can leave their payments in, um, people who want to make appointments to, coming one-on-one, we're working with them as well. So, um, we're doing what we can and, and helping everybody through it. So, thank you for all your support as well.
Thank you so much, Becky.
Thank you, Becky.
Yes, that's you, you're welcome. All right, last but not least, we have Director Butler.
You probably didn't hear me say I go last a lot. All right, I'll stick to the agenda. Uh, the first item is the, uh, what, Chusett Street, sixty-eight, i- intersection update, I believe I forwarded it on email. Mike, can you put that up, please?
Sure.
Um, basically, this just puts in writing what, uh, what I said the last time I was at a, a selectments meeting. Um, it, it describes the short-term improvements, uh, that, in other words, they're going to, um, produce a report that gives us our options, um, the first being some simple, more cost-effective options, and the second being some long-term improvements. Um, and I've, I've been pretty strict with them about trying to get me a, uh, get me a report in time so that we could write a, uh, warrant if we wanted to spend some money to address those issues. Any questions?
No, let's keep going, Jeff.
Okay, well, now, um, that's all I wanted to do, was just to update everybody on sixty-eight, tell them what's going on. Once we have the, uh, the report in hand, which should probably be sometime end of this week, beginning of next week, uh, I can forward that on and we can see if we want to propose an article to make some changes. All right?
Yes.
All right. Next, this one, um, is the memorandum of understanding between the Department of Conservation and, or DCR and the town. Um, some background on this, um, I don't have to tell anyone here, we've been having some intense discussions with DCR about sewers as we try to renegotiate our sewer use agreement. Uh, we have, uh, we've been frustrated with the fact that the town has done a lot of inflow infiltration work over the last, you know, twenty years, and we had trouble documenting what DCR has done. Um, so we were asked of them to, you know, honor the agreement and propose a plan, and, uh, um, they were reluctant, and they kept coming back to us and saying, had they done infiltration and inflow work, we would have had to pay for it. And we said, you know what, we welcome that, we want to pay for that. Um, on average, for every one gallon, for every three gallons going through the meter outside of town, only one gallon was gonna, we're billing for, so we need to deal with II. And, um, we didn't get a warm and footy or, you know, a sense that DCR was really gonna step up and deal with the I, II in their five miles of sewer town. So, uh, we talked to the, our consultant, and we offered to do the work. Um, I'd like to tell you, I think it does come in cheaper if we do it this way, and, um, we'll cut back on maintenance costs over the next couple of years. This one's kind of complicated, so if anyone has any questions, please go ahead. Wow. Okay.
I will say, um, just to go with what Joe was saying here, uh, because of the way our current intermunicipal agreement is written with DCR, uh, the work that we pay, that we would be paying for if they were to do this work themselves, uh, is a lot more expensive than if we just do it for them. So the fact that they're letting us do the work on their lines is actually a financial benefit to the town, uh, both in the work, the money we have to pay upfront to do this work for them, and in the, uh, cost we'd be saving overall by doing the, uh, II work on the line in general, just because of how much we're potentially losing from the line sector, it's actually a very big cost difference.
So can I then, uh, through the chair, I have a question, uh, can we, I guess first, I think this, this is great, um, I think, first of all, it's shameful that we have to work on DCR's infrastructure, it's, but it sounds like this, this gets us to where we're gonna have, um, all of the paperwork, like, all of the records, I think some of that was the issue initially with some of this work. Um, it gets us to a better spot, and, you know, and still, you know, we have to, I guess, pay for it is, is a little bit unfortunate, but, um, this is, I think this is positive overall.
Yeah, I, we were always going to pay for it, um, the fact that they agreed to this, Joe, is, is rupturous, and really, I, I don't know how you did it, um, this is amazing, I, I'm only looking at page one right now, and I thought I saw something about sharing the information, didn't I?
We have to share whatever we find with both DCR and DEP.
I have a question along those lines, and this may be addressed, I haven't read, read the whole document completely yet, but, um, will, are we, will the town be allowed to go ahead and perform the repairs that are necessary based on the, um, findings of the, the survey work, or do we, will we then have to go back to, um, DCR and ask for permission to repair the lines or have them repaired?
We're, um, in the existing memorandum of understanding and the existing intermunicipal sewer agreement, we're responsible for making those repairs, or, I'm sorry, responsible for paying for those repairs. Um, DCR did mention that they want to approve any repairs that we go forward with, but they're not making any money on this, so I don't imagine they would push back on.
That, I guess, is my question, it seems like it's, uh, seems it's the town to have the town, the, 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 um, the survey work and everything, I, all of that to some means also... paid to work, um, for the additional survey work and everything. I, all of that to some means also cost-effective for the town to be the one responsible for any repairs that are needed. And I just want to know if that has been worked out yet or not. But I think that this is great no matter what, so if that needs to be addressed down the road, then you know, we'll see what we can get at this point for sure. Thank you.
So I have some numbers, just quick. I want to say our, our cost, we're getting the capital money we borrowed for II is around 120,000. That's what we would be spending on that five miles of sewer. The other thing I I think that's prudent and I want to call out, if we, in in five years that you've had the existing intermunicipal agreement, we weren't able to document anything that DCR had done to date. And my concern is if we waited on them, we'd be continuing, potentially continuing to pay for more than we needed to.
One of the things I'll say, just to echo what Joe's saying here, in the intermunicipal agreement, one of the things we'd be paying for is minimum overtime rate for the commute for whoever was doing the work from their home to the town. A lot of this work has been done by people from Boston, so we'd be paying overtime rate for someone to drive from Boston to Robert to do the work, and then an overtime rate for them to drive back to Boston past the work we've done. So these are just savings that we have here because we are able to go do the work. They were shocked when we offered to do it, but it's a massive savings for the town. It was really a no-brainer, and I got to thank Joe for grabbing the ball by the horns there and just getting that done. I will say to you another thing. Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say thank you to both of you. I know this has been a lot of work, and so it's not unnoticed by any means.
Absolutely. To echo Leah's saying, kudos. I mean, that's, this is, this is big. This is, uh, this is great.
It'll be bigger if we find stuff, which I, I mean, they are the oldest sewers in town, so I hope so.
I don't want to, but, well, but I'm looking at a sentence that says, no work shall be performed prior to receipt approval by DEP. Obviously, that's the work within the MOU. Do you have any expectation that we would not improve it from DEP?
We basically already have it electronically.
That's just a standard procedure, right? That's not something that's going to hang up anything. I mean, that's, what do you mean when you said, Joe, when you said we basically have it electronically?
Well, um, we forwarded all this information on to DEP in advance of getting the MOU signed, and they approved what we wanted to do. They had a couple of questions. Um, DCR has been on the hook to do work, to do II work on their sewer system for some time, and they have been a little bit remiss. So I I think DEP was happy we were jumping in.
Uh, one thing I will say too, just to cut, to continue on the work that Joe is doing on our sewer front, is we got a rate from Worcester for next year now, which is something that we have not received before since we've had an IMA with DCR. So the DCR did forward that rate along to us now with the provisions of the existing IMA for the first time since we've done sewer work with them. So that's a favorable for us, but now DCR is adhering to the language of the contract. Because Worcester had been sending them what their draft rates were, and when Worcester was closing their budget, they just have never been forward in the lines of the town. So thank you to Joe for actually making sure that got done. Uh, what we'd be looking for here is a motion for electronic signature by the board. Basically, you create it, sign it, and try to take a picture and scan it back to me. We compile it together, and that's what the legislature and the, uh, now allowing for to make sure.
I can make a motion.
Just before you make the motion, Joe, on number nine on the page that we're all looking at, there's no termination date. How long do you want this to go?
I don't think we need more than two years.
Do we want some some buffer time in there, or do you think that's insufficient for what your your needs are, Joe?
Yeah, I think we'll be all right. I would, I mean, we could always go back and renegotiate, but I I think two years is fine.
So Mitch, do you mind, do you want to do end of fiscal year? Do you want to do like?
I was just going to say end of fiscal year makes sense, so, um, yeah, motion to sign, uh, MOU as presented with a termination date of June 30th, 2022.
So I have a second.
Dylan's second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Starry city eye.
Dylan's eye. It's been a long time coming. Walker eye.
Wayne man eye. Thank you, guys.
Bye. That's amazing. Very exciting.
Um, Michael, just quick, I, I sent on the email from DEP. You could forward it on to the board from back of the venue.
Yep.
And what is our last item?
Uh, just a verbal update on the water work.
Okay, um, we basically broke the, uh, the work in the inward area into three or four phases. And the first phase has been designed. It's gone out for public bid. We had roughly 10 people bid on it, or 10 firms, I say. And we're ready to award the contract. Give me a second. I'll give you the name of the firm. It's RFS Corporation, uh, more for mess. They were the low bid. It's roughly almost 1,800 linear feet of water main. Total cost of the bid is, uh, total base bid is 330,901 dollars and 71 cents. There's an alternate bid of, uh, because we broke the paving into a separate piece of 59,450, 4, 59,450.
So Leah first, and then.
Joe, do you have, uh, roads or areas that that first phase is going to be addressed? I know there's a lot of residents that are in that neighborhood that have a lot of questions and have had water issues. So just wondering if you can, um, provide us kind of a map or put on high a map or something so people can see.
I think we had a set of plans online already, but I can get you an updated set.
Thank you.
I guess, through the chair, my question, uh, Joe, and that comes out to like, like a buck eighty-five a linear foot based on the quote. When these these bids, I guess, how much, a two-part question, how much lower was it? And two, is there a cost contingency built into the bid? And I guess my fear with some of these projects is that we get into something and it ends up costing twice as much as what the company bid for to obtain the bid. Is there a 10, 15% contingency, like with construction problems?
The engineer did put construction contingencies in, yes.
So does that price that you gave us include that contingency, or is that contingency on top of kind of a worst-case scenario that that could cause that to walk a little bit?
No, I'm pretty sure it's included.
Okay, all right.
We have Weston and Sampson doing most of the construction management. We're not doing it in-house.
Okay, okay. Just out of curiosity, I was just curious. Thank you.
We'll probably take the second, um, we're going to wait and see how they perform. If they perform, we may go in into the next phase right after July 1st.
That's great. Great. Thank you.
What do you have? Any anticipated start date for this?
Well, we were hoping to get it shoveled in the ground sometime in May. Um, we've got the concrete documents, they've been. You got to get it, Wayne?
Nope, sorry.
That's okay. Um, the contracts are in place. They've been signed by the town officials. The one left is council, correct? Michael?
And they sent that off to KP to personally check with David Che.
So I would imagine Wayne sometime mid, mid-May. That's the.
Leah, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
I just want to caution people. I mean, they're going to basically bring an excavator into that area and tear up those streets. I don't think it's going to affect anything with traffic, but at this point, we're going to patch everything, let it winter over, and then rebuild the streets the following year.
How many residents, Joe, will this affect, this first phase?
Maybe 30.
So is it worth you sending them a letter?
Yeah, we, we would definitely do that before we get started, but we don't have the, all the documents signed yet.
Thank you. That's another good project we have to get going.
The, the plan is, uh, they'll have, we're going to manipulate the existing water main as long as we can, so no one will probably be on bypass. And once we get the new water main in, we'll start switching people over.
Thank you.
Joe, all of your updates were excellent, and I feel like they were all good news. Let's just keep it coming, you know?
Yeah, and, you know, Joe, I wanted to use one of my reactions that I think might turn the bomb off. I can't, I can't seem to react with the thumbs up here. Oh, there it is.
There it is. There you go. Well, thank you.
It jumps the shark on our meeting.
We're very excited about the, uh, the MOU. Thank you very much for your support. I think long-term it'll make a big difference.
Thank you so much. Um, I hope the department heads, much as we love seeing you, are not staying here if you don't have to. Again, love to have you with us, but if you need some rest, we know you're going through a lot, please have a good night. We're going to move on to old business and the most this town event, an award update. Jeff, take it away.
Well, I, we're about a month out from the original proposal of, uh, May 15th for the town event. Since I think the last time I briefed, I was in touch with the Otters, the local band, and they're willing to come and play in the concert right there at the Old Fire Mountain. But I think what we have to discuss as a board now is it unrealistic to have a town event on the 15th of May. So we have a conversation about pushing it back, or at least postpone this event until we get the band out.
I think, uh, through the chair, can I, go ahead? I, I just, um, had a comment, Jeff. I know that, I, I checked earlier today, uh, just to see what we received. I know we haven't received any nominations yet for the award. I know you, you might have one to submit. I just think that it's, we're in such a interesting climate right now in terms of what's going on. Um, I think things like this and kind of what you've been able to do with some of these opportunities have been great for town morale. Um, and so, you know, for something like this, I think, yes, it would be appropriate to push it back a little bit. But, uh, yeah, I also, I, I wanted to make, if we're talking about nominations, um, I really think that there's, if you look at what's gone on during this whole episode that started with the pandemic, we have so many first responders in town, or bedroom community for so many nurses, doctors, people that are working the front lines. I think, you know, my nomination for this and my thought behind it would be maybe to have a discussion as to whether there's some way we can use this as an opportunity for the first inaugural Moses Howell Award to really honor the whole town and how they've responded to this entire situation occurring, so that when this ends, you know, we can have that public celebration. It becomes a public celebration of how we as a community pulled together to come through this, and whether that's a commemorative, a statue, or a plaque, or something that really future generations can look to with pride to say how we, you know, overcame, and we will, um, this, this whole pandemic issue. I just wanted to throw that out there. I know we're probably going to have to delay the thing anyhow, um, because realistically, the middle of May is, is pushing it. But I really just wanted to have that conversation, um, because I think at this point, with the severity of what's going on, it would be really appropriate, and it would be great for, for town morale.
Go ahead.
Excellent. Uh, thank you for that, Mitch. Appreciate that. I think, I think one step behind the annual award and having, uh, setting, setting, setting an announcement and a nomination process for the annual award, doing that in the, uh, you know, the early quarters of the year would be to recognize something that would happen the previous year. Uh, I did write up a nomination and submitted it to the chair and the TA yesterday. So there is one nomination in writing that has been submitted, and I think this pandemic is going to be an event that will carry us throughout the whole year, certainly the fiscal year, and that would be something for the 2021 award, whereas my nomination was for an event, a heroic event that took place in 2019. I, I think it's a great idea. They're all great ideas, and, and it all feeds into why we should have a town recognition for public service. That's awesome. So my other thought, that I would just throw out there, not to belabor things, that if we were to push this back, and I think we should, it's just too soon, we push it back, it wouldn't necessarily be as specific to Police Memorial Day, whereas May 15th nationwide is the Police Memorial Day. If we were to push this back even a month, I think we would reach the point where the nation is coming out of the shadows, and this would be a great opportunity for our town to come out of the shadows and have that town event right there on the Old Fire Department Station, the Old Fire Station, to have the concert, the free community concert with blankets and the chairs, and then the pouring license, and then the cannons, which we have coming. I think that'd be a great event, but it needs to be a safe event, and it needs to be when, when the coast is clear. So I would hate to even fix a date, but I think right now it would be prudent for us to lift the May 15th and to be determined after that endpoint, and then it would be an excellent opportunity to make this public, a public safety, a first responder recognition for getting us through this crisis. And so that's my thoughts. And lastly, uh, working on the plaque, I did pick up a very big, heavy piece. I'm not sure what type of wood it was, but it came off a, a bar in Hardwood that was donated, and I seen it in a work and with a laser engrave it to see if we can get that laser etched and whatnot. So we would have something that'd be impressive. If anybody has any design, any options, I'd be happy to send a piece of the wood and let me know what, what your thoughts would be. So that's it. That's what I got. I think it would be prudent for us to lift May 15th until the, uh, the coast is clear on the pandemic and then continue with a community event, yeah, hopefully well before the Fourth of July week of events.
So Jeff, would you be looking for a motion to extend it, and then maybe we pick a date once we have a little bit more clarity as to kind of how things are shaping up?
Yes, I, I think so. I think that'd be prudent. You know, and also, you know, it's not just us. We have a lot of players that have been involved, certainly the police department and the fire brigade themselves, um, should be consulted, make sure that, you know, they, they'd be okay with it. And I think they would understand. Is, is the fire chief still there, Seth?
I think he left.
No, he actually, he walked us to the top.
Yeah, it's the right thing to do. It's just, uh, it's less than a month away, and we're still talking about the next two weeks being the peak, the peak of this. It's not the time to have an, an all-call, bringing the, the townspeople. I don't think the townspeople would respond at soon to having some sort of a concert.
So Jeff, are you okay with a motion to delay with a new date to be announced? And do you also want to extend the nominations for another 30 days or?
Well, I'm okay with the first part of that, Sheila, and what I would like is, only because that if we are going to do the plaque and, you know, we're working on that, it'd be nice to get that logged in. We did have a deadline for, I think, Tax Day for nominations to come in. I think it would be a good opportunity for, just a reminder that if you had some, something, throw it out, out there, then if the agenda is light, maybe we can discuss it and the next agenda. So it's all, it's all good. I think, I think it's great. And if we have an abundance of, uh, other things, first responders, I mean, it's, it's a blank slate. There's an opportunity that we started last year, that we could do a creative thing, a creative event with the goal of recognizing the heroes that brought this, brought us through the pandemic. And there's all kinds of great ideas that we can do at this event, so. Anyways, like a motion. Thank you.
I could, if, is anybody else, I can make the motion if nobody else wants to. Is, uh, just make a motion to, uh, to extend the, uh, the ceremony portion of the Moses Howell Award for a date to be determined at a future select board meeting while keeping in place the nomination. meeting, uh, while keeping in place the nomination deadline that had been set prior.
Five seconds?
Half second.
Any more discussion? We're done?
We're seated. All right.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right. All right. Award. Um, under new business, this is very quick. You know, I think I brought up, um, Earth Day, last meeting, mainly as a note that we've just had so many people who are trying to get out, get some fresh air, trying to stay in their neighborhoods, and they're, you know, seeing the buildup of garbage on the roadside and things like that. So Earth Day is, um, we still have one more meeting coming in between, but it's, uh, it's Wednesday, April twenty-second. And what I had a brief conversation with Mike about was that we've got the town website, um, do a pretty good job on Facebook, but obviously Facebook has, uh, a limited, uh, audience to a point, particularly with interaction, particularly with maybe the younger generations. So the Town of Rutland does have an Instagram account, um, it's Town of Rutland MA. It has, and, and honestly, I don't know the history of it. Um, it's only a few years old. It has zero posts, seventy-five followers. And what I'm hoping is we can use this as a jumpstart to try to get the little, the Instagram, uh, off the ground a little bit, and we can do a hashtag of, uh, Earth Day Rutland MA. Uh, and, and really, what all we'll be looking for would be either before and after, or just after, or the picture of the bag of trash. Um, and, and it was really just that. It would have been lovely to do something bigger. This is actually an anniversary year for Earth Day, but obviously we can't do a celebration. A lot of towns are scaling back some of the bigger things that they have typically done. But we've already got people out there really doing some amazing things. They're, you know, as long as they're doing it safely, picking up trash, not putting themselves in any danger, either by being on a roadside or by touching items that, you know, they don't know the problem is. So whether they're using a glove or using ta, uh, tongs of some kind and making sure it goes into a bag, they've been really amazing about it. And I think we just wanna see if we can try to give them a little bit of recognition, um, get that Instagram jumpstart at the same time. And that was it. Um, on a side note, and I think we had our, our Chiefs leave, um, it has been incredibly frustrating. I know it's made it to the news about all the garbage that's being strewn around everywhere we look, right? The night child gloves and masks that people are throwing on their car windows, and that continues here in Rutland as well. I've seen posts about, uh, you know, a TV on the side of Memorial Road and, and mattresses up in one of the Land Conservancy property. It's, it's, it's a wonderful thing, I guess, that there are people who are able to take this time at home and, and do some cleaning. Um, but, uh, they're gonna have to figure out a way to hold on to the, the stuff that they can't get rid of right now that they might have otherwise brought to the recycling center that's closed for the future. Um, you know, figure out a way, would you get that new TV to work in the cost of disposing of the old one? Uh, that's the other side of, of Earth Day that we can't really, can't really do too much about. But that's it. Everybody's okay with that. We will go forward with it. It's not any massive, uh, program or project, but we do have the Instagram. We'd like to see it get going if we can, if, I can, I can figure out who owns it. Mike, did you make, make any progress with that?
Not yet. But we will continue to work on it.
All right. Uh, moving on, I think, oh, Anita, you still with us?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. I know. Eight thirteen P M. Uh, all right, Annual Town Election.
Now, Pat, basically, as you know, the, the new emergency legislation, um, allowed to slow down the, the election process by permitting a vote to postpone, be made by either the Select Board or the Board of Registars. Uh, last week I reached out individually to, um, the other three registrars, and they all said that they were fine with leaving the vote to your board and my recommendation. Um, the advice that we're getting from both Lauren Goldberg at KT Law and the head of the, uh, Legal Council and Secretary Galvin's Election Division is to vote, um, to postpone it this time, but not to a date certain. Uh, the, the deadline to hold the meeting with, uh, the election would be June thirtieth, and if your board votes to postpone tonight, uh, a date would just have to, for a new election date, just has to be made thirty days, uh, twenty days prior to the postponed vote. So you would still have, have probably three or almost four meetings before you would have to, to vote for a date to, to make it within that deadline. Um, the legislation also approved additional, um, temporary changes to move the, the, the electoral process forward, to allow as many voters as possible to participate. And, uh, the biggest way that they have done that is to permit early voting by mail, you know, for municipal elections for this year. And, uh, some of the other measures that could be looked at later when we start to talk about, you know, another date is that we could reduce the number of hours the polls are open, and can also, um, we could also actually vote to change polling or, or you could vote to change polling locations and combine precincts. So there's a lot of things to, to think about for the next time around. But basically, right now, um, nomination papers have been, um, processed, and we just keep following the, the same election timeline. Uh, Wednesday is the last day for any candidate to withdraw, and then we'll be sending the ballot out for printing on Thursday. Um, it's been recommended that we start publicizing the availability of early voting ballots by mail as soon as possible. So that will be an interesting process.
And before, you know, I just have a quick question about that. Uh, the early voting, so no voting at all can take place until we set a date correct, and then it includes early voting. So once we set a date, then we can early vote?
Nope. Nope. We could, the early voting process will start it as soon as, as our office receives the ballots back, which would be next week. So we can keep moving forward. And even though the ballot, uh, we were advised, look, Damian and I, um, attended like an hour and a half long Zoom meeting that, um, Lauren Goldberg hosted for Town Clerk. And so she answered lots of, of, lots of election issue questions and gave us a lot of tips about how to move forward, including, I mean, we print the ballots as, as it is. We use the May eleventh, um, election date, and then we just use those same ballots, um, at the polls once a new date is, is determined. So it gives, it gives a much longer time for people to actually early vote, and, and I, the goal is to basically reduce the number of people that will probably be going to the polls once the date is set. Like-
If I just add on to that too, um, it's, so Anita's correct to, if you're looking at the future now, uh, once, a date doesn't have to be set, and we could be getting ballots in at the Town Clerk's office through the mail, which is something that I just wanna reemphasize that Anita just explained. Uh-
Right.
Because the ballots are printed with the date, the current date of the elec, election schedule, the state had authorized us to continue to reuse those ballots, even though the date on it will say May eleventh.
Correct.
Even if it's pushed back. So we'll still be using those, uh, for instance, and it's, uh, there's another municipality that, uh, an election was postponed without a date, but they already have a hundred and twenty votes mailed in through absentee and early vote, and they, uh, they weren't voting to set their election date until this evening. So we can continuously be getting people's votes in. They just won't be counted until the board votes to set the in-person date for those that do not participate through early mail-in voting.
Yeah, and all early voting are counted, um, on election day also. They're not, they would be counted separately. Um, we, we have the option of either taking them all to the polls and running them through, which is what we did in March, have election workers do that, or, um, depending on how things go, we could, um, set, set up something called a central tabulation facility that I would just have to let the state know we were doing. Uh, we could possibly do that like in the lower level of a community hall and have just a few, fewer election workers processing all the early voting ballots. So it would, would alleviate some of the, um, some of the congestion, say, at the polls, as we were, as we were actually doing the, the regular in-person voting, which we still have to allow. We can't, we can't, um, mandate that everybody has to vote by early, early voting ballots.
So Anita, do you want us to take these individually? Because how much will you like the town to continue to follow the bylaw? And I guess what I put is that the meeting right now is before the election.
Oh, you mean to, to vote on the, I think you should vote on the, the election separate from, from the town, from the town meeting, because the date could end up being different. And, and also, we were talking about separating the warrant, so that the, the, um, the warrants, so that there's one for the annual town meeting and one for the annual town election. I think it would just make deadlines, uh, less complicated and, and cleaner once the new dates are voted for both of those.
Yeah, um, Anita and I were on that call with Lauren. Um, you'll remember whenever you see the annual town meeting warrant, the last page of it is actually the election warrant, and they're both posted as one together. Uh, what Lauren is, the best thing we do is we post them separately, sign them separately. That way, if they do have to be further apart from each other, we don't run into any issues there. It gives us more flexibility. It's allowed of the both our bylaws and the new law signed by the governor. Um, so that's why Lauren, I can't be in a suggesting we take that route.
So, I wanna- Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so basically, the only vote I think that you would have to take tonight concerning the election is just postpone it to, uh, a, a future date and not, uh, determine a date certain.
The election or town? I thought-
Yeah, the election.
Mike, can you go back?
Yes. These would be two separate votes.
Oh, right.
So we have, we have to have an election, a, a motion to postpone the election to a date to be determined at a later time.
I think Sheila's question was about in regards to correlation with the town meeting.
Yeah.
How we move forward with the town meeting date. Uh, I know the two things are gonna be taken separately, but I think, uh, Sheila was alluding to the bylaw and that the town meeting is held right now, as of right now, before the election. That's correct? That's what you're looking at, right, Sheila?
I mean, a little bit. I mean, we know Paxton just moved their meeting to the last possible date prior to the end of fiscal year. Mike, if you can go up one page, I just wanna make sure I understood it the right way. Cause I, when I first read it, I thought it was that you can postpone your meeting to a date uncertain, but that the election, yeah, see, the, the election needs to be prior to June thirtieth. Is that correct?
Prior to June thirtieth. You don't need to set the date now, I think is what Anita was saying, Sheila.
Right. No.
No, I, I think I understand what the confusion, if I can jump in here, just because I think there's three different views on it, but I think they're all connected, is the governor signed legislation last week that allows us to have town meetings past June thirtieth if we feel like we shouldn't have that many people sitting in Glenwood together. However, an election must happen prior to June thirtieth under that law that the governor signed. So the question is here- What's that?
I'm sorry. I was just, they, unless there's new legislation to make additional changes.
Yes.
For now, the election has to be by June thirtieth.
So-
And I feel like that is one of the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
I feel like that's one of the reasons why Anita and I are suggesting that we postpone to a date to be determined for both of these. Uh, that way we can see what's going on here. Cause one of the reasons why the law for town meeting was written with that flexibility that doesn't have the hard June thirtieth deadline that the election has, is that, uh, the statute does not allow for remote participation in town meetings, uh, nor any early, um, early voting situation like you can do in an election. And we're taking this on a two-week basis, uh, basis here, dealing with the virus. Uh, we also wanna make sure that we start out for the new official, by the new fiscal year. Uh, so that's why there's differences in the way the legislation was written like that. But I understand that you think.
So, so I'm gonna set aside the election, which is for now, although as a side note, knowing that we have until June thirtieth, and that's what's in front of us, I'm not sure why we simply set the date to be whatever Anita's best date was prior to June thirtieth. But I wanna circle back to town meeting, which is, I, I understand what the governor's office is doing by giving us some flexibility to go to a one-twelfth budget, but at the end of the day, this will be over at some point, and I don't see the value. If we are ready and if it is safe in us postponing, what I would envision at this point would be a very basic annual term meeting that we care for, the most basic of our need, i.e. approving a budget. Nothing fancy, nothing extra, nothing that requires an enormous amount of discussion back and forth, right? Obviously, you know, several weeks ago, we had Peter's entire laundry list of all of the bylaw updates. To me, that wouldn't be on the table anymore. But I, I don't see the value in putting off town meeting and going to a one-twelfth budget when we have the information in front of us. Again, to the best of our ability. And I, I do understand what Mike is saying, which is, well, things might change in a month. But if things change in a month, they'll change for everyone, and everyone who has set their dates will have to go back and revisit this. For now, not, I, I don't see the value leaving the town, which has been preparing for town meeting, moving more towards town meeting and getting our budget passed. I, I, you know, we've got the school number as well. Um, I, I see the value in putting it off and not trying to get our town meeting in before the end of the season.
Well, I think, Sheila, the, the value of town meeting isn't just to pass the budget, it's to elicit, you know, public participation. And I think the value in postponing it, the argument can be made that, that if something were to happen and we were to hit peak and then come down from that, that could increase public participation in the town meeting, which realistically, I mean, town meeting is the one, uh, annual event, aside from special, where the public is to get together and help make those choices as to how to spend their tax dollars. So I would be in favor of potentially pushing that if it means that we could potentially maximize participation. We don't, to your point, you're right, in that we don't know what the timeline for that's gonna be. I mean, we could be in the same situation we are a month from now, or two months from now, and we don't know what that's going to look like. But I would always err on the side of increased democratic participation than, than not.
Well, I mean, I think I, obviously, safety would be imperative. So if we're looking at June thirtieth as the date of, you know, until the end of fiscal year, and at the point of June thirtieth, and of course, you know, none of us have a crystal ball, but are the Red Sox back playing as Fenway? Um, if, if, if the social distancing controls have been lifted, if we are in a position to have the meeting, and I think that is a big if, I don't, I'm not sure why we would put it on the line. That is the big if, but at the moment, it's, it's all we know.
Um, just, uh, to clarify a comment that was made earlier too, I have the bylaw pulled up here on my computer, uh, and I do note that the bylaw does say that the town meeting shall take place on a Saturday preceding the second Monday, with the election taking place on the second Monday, but it does not explicitly, explicitly say that the election has to take place after town meeting.
Okay. So some flexibility there.
And in fact, my interpretation of that would be that the new legislation allows us to, uh, just delay for the date of the bylaw, the election has to be the second Monday of May, the town meeting would have to be the second, the Saturday preceding the second Monday of May, and it allows us to just push those dates back.
Yeah, I, you know, the other thing is, I just keep thinking that when this is eventually over, at some point it will be over, people are gonna go to bed and wake up the next morning, and they're gonna want things to be as close to back to whatever normal is as they can get it. And I don't know that we're doing anybody a service by kicking something down the can if we don't have to. If we have to, well, that's, that's not up for discussion. Uh, right now, I, I just, I don't know, I don't, I don't see the value in postponing it and saying you'll go to a one-twelfth budget, cause the town's still operating, and the taxes are still rolling in, and we won't have given the people any say, I guess, Mitch, to your point, in how that goes forward as of July first, other than to say, well, we're on a one-twelve- on a 112. We'll just, we'll just keep going with what you gave us last year, it should be fine. I, I, I just assume, get done what we can, get the business of the town still rolling as much as possible.
I guess my question then, Sheila, uh, to that point, would be, realistically then, for town meeting, uh, I don't know how we would feel about this, but I would like, if that's the case, if we're just talking about keeping it where it is because of the uncertainty and to be able to get budget items passed, who, if we're eliminating that public participation piece, or at least minimizing it?
No, why?
Because if, if, if we are holding the town meeting at the date that is scheduled, we're looking at really limiting public participation.
No, 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 I'm saying, move it to the date-
The last possible date.
The last possible.
Without moving to-
A 112.
And then I guess we can revisit that, if we're at a different point.
Right. I'm absolutely not suggesting we go May 11th, that's just, that, I don't-
Okay. I just wanna clear that up. Great, alright.
So Anita, you'd be recommending that we postpone both, both to a date to be determined at a later time?
I, yeah, I agree.
Alright, Jeff, on the motion. Be ready for one, Sheila.
Um, what? Yeah, I wish it had dates in it, but go ahead.
Jeff, before we make a motion, um, do we wanna separate those two items? Because I know Sheila, you didn't care last meeting, you wanted her cues from the election vote. Should we just take them separately, or how do you wanna handle it?
We should have taken, we should take them separately anyway. So, which one do you wanna do, Jeff?
Um, I'll, I'll start with, uh, the election, and then both are based upon, recommended the sound advice and recommendation by our town administrator and our town clerk. Make a motion to postpone the town election to a future date to be determined at a later time, period.
Um, Wayne, you wanna take this one?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. But then, can you call for the vote?
Look, can I ask a question for Anita first, because we have a second motion? Um, I guess my, my question, Anita, is, in delaying, this is obviously an interesting, or a weird situation, and this, this is just new for everybody, but in delaying the election and allowing for really unfettered, um, you know, early voting and absentee ballots, uh, because of the pandemic, um, do you have any concerns regarding, I guess, anything in terms of fraud or, um, providing advantages or whatever? I mean, has this changed the playing field in terms of the normal electoral process in your, in your view whatsoever?
I don't think so. And I think that the longer the time that we have, once we can start getting the ballots out, it, it probably will level the playing field, because it gives, you know, any, any candidates more time to, um, let their supporters know that there are early voting ballots available. Um, the other thing is, is I anticipate three write-in, at least three write-in races for, um, for some positions, uh, to incumbents to, um, get their papers turned in, uh, mostly because they, you know, they felt awkward getting signatures. Um, there's nobody running against them, but, um, but they've indicated that they would probably run, um, write-in campaigns, so that would also give them time to get that news out. Um, but my biggest concern is, is figuring out what to do about, um, we have to mail, application forms have to be received by us, and then we have to mail the ballots out. Uh, I would like to figure out a way that could safely, uh, have residents return the ballots without having to put a stamp on them. I don't think that the drop box out front would, uh, would accommodate as many as I anticipate, but, um, it's really hard to know, but.
It was- I'm sorry, go ahead, Anita.
It changes the, it changes the voter registration deadline to by, uh, like right now, the voter registrat- registration deadline based on May 11th, because it's April 17th, but, uh, once the vote is taken to postpone, uh, that pushes the, the voter registration deadline out also until 10 days prior to a new date, so.
So I guess my follow-up question is what the purpose of moving the election would be if there's all this increased access? There's really no need for folks to actually physically show up if they're uncomfortable. I mean, realistically, what, what is the, what is the goal?
I, I wouldn't, I mean, right now, I wouldn't feel comfortable asking any of my election workers to staff an election on May 11th. It just, I think we need to, you know, the public buildings are only gonna be opened on the 4th, so I think we need to give it a little time to, to see exactly how things play out.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I would like to say, just to add on to that too, is, uh, the way the statute was written is very voter-friendly and less candidate-friendly. So for instance, the, um, access to voting by the voter is greatly increased by mail-in, uh, mail-in voting and no reason absentee voting as well. Uh, and it, it also extended the deadline, like Anita said, for them to register to vote, but what it didn't extend is any of the candidate deadline. So it did not extend the deadline for nomination signatures returned. It did not extend the deadline for any other actions taken by the candidates. The only things that are extended are actions taken by the voters themselves to make sure that it is resident-friendly without giving someone an uproot.
Correct.
Okay. Any more discussion? So we have a motion, a second. We have a roll call vote?
Almost points of eye.
Wayne, an eye.
Or city eye.
Walker, eye.
Good for state.
Four eyes and one for state.
Um, Wayne, just one thing too, uh, where Anita and I are both suggesting, uh, based off of Anita's recommendation, to post a separate warrant of, uh, for the election outside of the annual town meeting warrant. You see that on your screen, it would just be for the election here. Uh, so we'd be looking for a motion to sign, to sign and post the town election warrant, uh, with the denotation that this has been postponed to a later date to be determined.
We need to-
Anita, did I get that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Still need a motion for that?
Yep, Jeff.
Yeah.
Make a motion to sign and post the annual election warrant with the, with the date to be, date to be determined, the order date, at a later date?
Yeah.
Is that the correct, correct wording, Mike?
Yeah, it's a, um, to sign and post the annual town election warrant, uh, with a notation that the, uh, future date will be announced, and a reposting will be done upfront.
Amendment.
Second.
Motion. Motion, second. Roll call vote, Al Jeva.
City eye.
Golden's eye.
Wayne, an eye.
Walker, eye.
Good for state.
Okay.
Wait your vote?
That?
Thank you.
Yes. I think we've voted at the same time, Jeff.
So, great. I heard both.
Yeah.
So, we're back to town meeting, and I'm, I'm just wondering why we wouldn't, knowing, again, knowing we know today, I know things might change, why, why we wouldn't make it June 27?
I like June 27th.
Well, honestly, we could do that, but if we had to change it, we still could.
Well, yeah, and we might have to, I get that, but as it stands right now, that is the last possible date before we go into a 112 budget to have our meeting, and coincides with when we usually have our meeting, which is Saturday night.
I like the point that you said, Sheila, that if, uh, things change, changes for everybody anyways, right? It's gonna be a come-off wide.
Yeah, I, I, I'm certainly not gonna sit here tonight and think that the 27th is set in stone. It's, it's set, I guess, pencil, rutland, at least, if we do it.
Let's do it.
Alright, so we need a motion to, um-
A mandatory previously approved town meeting calendar.
Can we, I guess, real quick, to, just to follow, Mike made a point earlier, just a quick question. So, we, we don't have to then adhere to the meeting being prior to the election?
Correct.
But this would still potentially give us time to host the election after the meeting? If that's the way we wanted to go?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, because that is the last Saturday. We still have Monday, the 29th, and Tuesday, Thursday, the 30th. Anita, can we run that?
It would have to be either that Monday or Tuesday, the 29th and the 30th.
But, but according to the legislation, those are your last dates anyway?
Yep.
As of now, I mean, I, hopefully, that the path to get pushed further out with any new legislation, but.
It sounds reasonable. June 27th, I think, I keep it under me there.
Um, I guess I would entertain a motion. So again, we are now amending the approved calendar and moving the meeting.
Are we amending the June 27th recommendation of the motion, or just to amend the, uh, the calendar?
And I, I just feel strongly that we should be trying to keep the town moving.
Yeah.
And we can't. I understood.
Yeah, we, I, I think Anita had made the recommendation, we, we just vote to postpone it, and then maybe as it just, like, it clears up, we can look at dates. I mean, would that just be easier instead of setting something in stone at this point, to be able to reassess? We have plenty of time.
Um, you know, again, for me, there's no plenty of time for the end of the fiscal year. That's gonna happen no matter what. Um, and we've had many years where the school, for example, went to a 112 because the budget was up in the air, and it doesn't go that well. Um, it's, it's, it's not an optimal situation if we don't have to do it.
We'd also have to consider that the, the finance committee and the, and the joint committee meetings, and all the, all the different preparation leading up to the annual town meeting are going to be done while we're still in the, in the descent of this whole thing going on, so.
Which, which would be another reason to keep the meeting, um, on point as far as the business of it goes. And, you know, I, I, I do hear what Mitch is saying, which is, we wanna have this democratic process. The, the process for the annual town meeting primarily has always been to review and approve a budget for the town meeting, primary, not to say there weren't other things that, that got put on the warrant.
There's no time for a filibuster, not this year.
I, I just, I don't know why we're set on a date. I mean, we were, remove the election without setting a date, and we took Anita's recommendation, which sounds like we're ignoring Anita's recommendation for this, and we're setting a date at-
Well, I, you know, Mitch, I, again, I abstained, obviously, for a reason, but you had a drop date on the election, which at some point you will entertain or take. Um, for me, this is just about the fiscal end of things, which is, I don't see any merit in going to a 112 budget if we don't have to.
Well, it's not what we're talking about at this point.
Yeah, but it is, it is.
Not though. It, we, we have two months, three months before the end of the fiscal year. We can set a date at any one of our board meetings prior to that.
Right. But that is the last possible date. It gives us the most time, to Jeff's point of, you know, doing most of the preparations right now, we won't be in Zoom. Uh, you know, at some point, we're gonna have to get together with FinCom collectively, uh, and talk about stuff like that as well. But there's no question, I, I'm choosing that date specifically to keep us from going to a 112 budget and ending our fiscal year without an approved budget for FY 2021. That's it. The only reason. And that's the last possible date. It gives the community, the state, the nation, the most time to recover. And again, if we're still not there and something happens, well, this is all, we know anyway. And I get that. But I don't see why we wouldn't try.
So we have Anita's town, the town clerk's recommendation is to just postpone it, but on date, and then we have the, uh, recommendation suggestion. We do set the date, June 27th, right? That's the two decisions, the two possible ways of this or not.
Right, but we could always, I mean, at the next meeting, we can set the 27th as the date too. We have plenty of time to set the 27th as the date to meet our obligations prior to the end of the fiscal year. So I mean, it's not like we have to make that decision right now. I think that's just the point that I was making, and I think that's why I'd rather just go with Anita's recommendation, um, that's to work towards some clarity as to how everything's gonna play out. We, we don't even know, there could be additional legislation that's passed between now and then. I just, yeah, I think it just provides us a little more flexibility.
Okay, so in that note, prior to somebody making a motion, which sounds like it's headed towards a date to be determined, maybe then what we could do, Mike, if you can reach out to the FinCom, ask if they have an opinion, ideally a voted opinion.
Correct.
Would be one thing. I think, you know, Mitch, CIPC might have an opinion as well. Um, let's reach out to them. Um, obviously, Anita, thank you so much for sticking with us as long as you have, because now it's quarter to nine. Um, and we'll just put it back on the next, um, next meeting agenda.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Uh, the FinCom is zooming on Thursday night, so I can, I can put that on their agenda for that.
Oh, it's really a verb now, isn't it? It's a verb. Okay. Alright, so we need a motion. Sounds like we're headed towards something.
A motion to postpone, uh, town meeting, uh, to a, a date uncertain while receiving clarity from the other affected boards and commissions, um, that are involved in the decision.
Can we include the, uh, special town meeting in that also?
Including, oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, including the special town meeting that proceeds, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, any more discussion? Roll call?
Or city eye.
Golden's eye. Walker, eye.
An eye.
An eye. Um, Anita, is, is it possible to put together a backwards calendar for us so we know where we're headed for that sort of last gasp? Okay, here's the date where somebody needs to make a decision about the election. And again, this is assuming nothing changes.
Sure, we could be that.
If, I may, I think, if I understood Anita right, we have to, we would have to determine these prior to the meeting. You would have to set the date two weeks prior to the date for the-
Twenty days.
For the election.
Yeah, twenty, twenty days prior.
Twenty days prior. My concern, and this is just my concern, is 20 days is not a lot of time for those other boards and commissions, so I would hate to decide next week that actually we're, you know, we're only, and this is, this is just an example, next week we're looking 20 days out and spring that on all of the boards and commissions, that, you know-
Well, the, the 20 days is for the election.
Okay, it's, well, it's for the town meeting.
Two weeks.
I don't think that's anyone's, I don't think we're gonna even be talking about that, Leah. I mean, that would, we're nowhere near ready to do that.
I understand, and that was simply an example, but what was the timeline for a town meeting? How many weeks prior? Do we have to post call?
Two.
Two.
Okay.
Just start our normal quarantine.
That's, I, I mean, that's two weeks for posting, Leah, but to your point, right, the FinCom knows about a scheduled town meeting a lot before, that you'd be official posting of the warrant for that town meeting.
Right, that's my point, is that I would hate to just kind of spring it on everybody two weeks before and be like, even though we should all be working to that, that- even though we should all be working to that, that, you know.
Yeah.
Information's open and that we're as proactive and foresight as possible.
I think we can all safely say that the town meeting, there's no way it's taking place on its regularly scheduled date, so that's the, the date that everyone's already prepping for. So I think we're all operating under the same assumption that it's going to be postponed. Um, so everyone's on the same page there, operating under that same assumption, it's just a matter of when and how. So I, I, to your point, Leah, I think that, um, if we just emphasize that, I think everyone's going to be on the same page and there's ample time to be able to have all the necessary conversations and the process that we're going to have.
Alright, I forget where we are, Anita vote? I think we do.
I did.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you, have a good night, everybody.
Well.
Night, thanks, Anita.
Alright. Mike, you've, um, co-opted my screen, I can't see my.
There you go.
Oh, the, uh, um, so I asked Mike to put this on, obviously we just started our fourth quarter. Um, it's a huge concern at the state level for the revenue projections, Mike, you want to let us know what you and Dan worked out?
Yeah, so I talked to our town accountant, Dan Kane, uh, we actually do not have any concerns about our revenue going into the fourth quarter, where our concerns come in are actually the next fiscal year. All of the, uh, bills that we're receiving now, the tax payments and the excise, uh, for real estate and excise, uh, are all things that are based off of last year's excise sales or the current valuation. Now, there is a concern statewide about how our revenue numbers are going to go next year, not just for the town of Rutland, but for every city in town in the Commonwealth and the Commonwealth itself, to particularly now where the Commonwealth pushed back the income tax deadline into the next fiscal year. So the state is not going to have that revenue to start off as well either. Um, so these are all things that we're looking at. Uh, our fourth quarter projections are stable, are steady, and we should be fine to finish out this fiscal year. Where our main concerns come from are the next fiscal year, uh, based off of the way the market is currently going and that's an effective value, uh, evaluation, um, and just general auto sales affecting our, uh, excise tax projections that we are currently building the FY twenty-one budget cost. Um, the one shoe that, uh, town administrators and managers have been talking very frequently to see what we're all doing. Uh, uh, we'll be, uh, we've already put in place a hiring freeze, uh, in our town department, um, some, uh, here in Rutland. Some of the other one shoe that towns have put out, uh, requests to all the departments to go at level funding for next year, some have not, um, this is really something that everyone in the state is handling differently and trying to figure out currently, but in terms of this current quarter, we seem to be going fine, we'll give you an update as we know more coming quickly.
Do you have any questions? Okay, uh, one ten, the special annual town meeting warrant request that has closed as of Friday? And in your drive? Um, is there any one of them that anybody wanted to, you know, have a brief discussion about right now?
I think, Sheila, I was actually just going to suggest, I know because it's, it's been a long meeting and, uh, because we're going to postpone this, I mean, do we want to be able to take some time to, to take a comprehensive look at these and then have a discussion at our next meeting? Um, if that works for everybody or?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Works to be.
Sounds good.
I would say when you go do that, for the annual town meeting warrant, go with option two. The only difference between option one and option two is option one has the election warrant as we've traditionally done, included with the town meeting warrant. So that's the difference there, and then the one citizen petition that we did receive, uh, is included as a PDF and that's all that you'll be able to view that as well.
Great, we'll take door number two, thank you, Mike.
Door number two, alright. And. We're almost there, the brigade lease for the old fire station.
It would be a motion to sign.
I'd like to make, Jeff, I'd like to make a motion to sign the, uh, extension of the lease with the Rutland Fire Brigade with the property at forty-six Main.
Two eighty.
Two eight six Main?
Yeah.
Forty-six Main Street.
Expiring September thirtieth, twenty forty-five.
Yeah, the lease has presented, uh, to us twenty-five years.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Did anybody have any questions about the lease? Uh, so very much unlike our last two, this is exactly like what they had.
The extension.
Correct.
As a, as a procedural question, um, uh, so it's just, uh, Jeff, Wayne, are, are you on the, uh, the Fire Brigade?
Yes.
So can.
I am.
You are not? Can we have a member vote for a lease for their own organization or do we have to have a refusal?
Uh, we'd be happy to refuse also, but, uh, any, any member of the Fire Brigade is a, uh, is a member for life.
Um, well, it, it also is a separated nonprofit, so I think Mitch, to your point, if it were a town department, obviously Wayne always recuses because he has a, an issue within the department itself. Um, as long as Jeff discloses the information, he technically could still vote.
Yeah, I mean, like I say, this is, this is something that resulted when I was fifteen, fifteen years old, when you sign the book to become a member of the Fire Brigade.
Uh, procedural question.
But, yeah.
I'd be happy to pull back the motion if you, if you wanted to make it.
So I think if you're good to go, then I guess we, I guess you would be inside of the big motion.
Alright, so we have a motion, did I, I got the second, right?
Yes.
The lease is the basic, looking at, is there any other discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
I want to vote, still anxiety.
Walker aye.
Point man aye.
City aye.
City bye, alright. Is there any other business?
Sheila.
Yes. Did I miss?
I was just going to say, I do have two, no, two items, uh, for new business here, just to let the public and the board know, uh, that happened during our meeting here, uh, I was getting some text alerts, uh, the five K nine that was originally scheduled for Saturday, May, uh, May ninth. May, yeah, the day that the original day that the five K nine was scheduled has been postponed, that will now take place on Saturday, September twenty-sixth. Uh, out of the abundance of caution for the, uh, current outbreak situation, so that has been postponed. The board account that their six o'clock meeting this evening voted that we will release all, um, COVID nineteen-related numbers to town this Friday, um, in an address and will, uh, release the updated numbers and a two-week interval after that as, uh, for the guidance that we've received from the Department of Public Health. So that will come out officially on Friday as we tear all the information together and we'll release them in every other week basis.
Thank you.
Alright, so I have, I guess I can make a motion to return if there's nothing else.
Thank you.
Real quick.
Good, why don't you give me the second and then you can add it?
Second for discussion. Sorry, just real quick, uh, the situation asked, uh, the townwide yard sale, is it safe to say that that's going to be pushed? If not canceled?
Yes, we received correspondence from the Fourth of July Committee on Saturday. Um, it would be too late to get them on this agenda because of how late it came in, but they are canceling the town yard, townwide yard sale and are looking for input as to how they perceive with their general Fourth of July event. Um, so they will be reaching out at the next select board meeting, but the town yard sale is canceled.
Thank you.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, can I get a vote on, uh, Jern? Jern?
City aye.
Still anxiety.
Walker aye.
Point man aye.
City bye, we hope everyone who's stayed with us this late, um, is staying well and safe and, uh, everybody have a good night.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.